Okay, it is six o'clock. I am calling to order the Rutland Select Board meeting. It's Tuesday, January twenty first, twenty twenty five, six P M. We're meeting in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library. This meeting is being recorded by town of Rutland staff. Held in person and we have Zoom option available as well. It's being recorded, it's, we're being livestreamed on local access television, I believe, and recorded for re-airing on local access television, YouTube and other social media outlets as well. Um, I don't see anyone on Zoom right now, so if we pop, see anyone pop up, we can just confirm that they can hear us and we can hear them. Um, we can start with the pledge, please.
Pledge your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
We're a five-member board in person tonight. It's nice to see everyone. Um, Happy New Year. Um, I have, we'll move into minutes, treasury warrant and payroll. I have approval of treasury warrant twenty five dash fifteen and twenty five dash P W fifteen. We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any comments or anything, Austin, um, for this?
Uh, just, um, our next quarterly assessment for Wantuset Regional School District. So this is a much larger warrant this week.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was the assessment?
Our, uh, third quarter assessment for Wantuset Regional.
Okay.
Just about a four million dollar payment.
The motion and a second? Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Lederer.
Calvin, I.
Waitman, I.
We have approval of meeting minutes from January sixth, twenty twenty five. That's a regular meeting. Um, I believe, um, Paul, you were absent. Is there a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve January sixth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Well, uh, motion and second. Is there any conversation? Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an S.
Lederer.
Calvin, I.
Waitman, I. Um, thank you. And then we have the January sixth executive session meeting minutes. Um, I believe it was just Jen, um, Harry and I for this one. Um, I would entertain a motion to approve but not release as this is still an ongoing consideration.
So moved.
Second. Any conversation?
No.
Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Lederer.
Calvin abstain.
Waitman, I. Thank you. Um, oh yeah. Paul, I think, do you wanna, well, I guess you can, you, you weren't there, but do you wanna abstain or?
You weren't there, Paul, so do you wanna abstain instead of saying I?
Oh, abstain.
Okay.
Matt's.
Um, and that's for, um, it's more comfortable with both sets, sets of minutes. Um, there was the D C R matter and the, um, the Faford versus Town of Rutland. Thank you, Tamika, for separating them out. I know we had asked to start having them so as if things are settled in different times, we can release the sets. Thank you. Um, I will open, we have a six o'clock public hearing for the common vic license for, um, the Rutland Tap and Table. So pursuant to M G L chapter one forty, section, section two, the Rutland Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January twenty first, twenty twenty five at six P M on application of Rutland Tap and Table for a new common vicu- vicu license, application for restaurant at the property located at two forty nine Main Street. Um, the meeting is, the public hearing is open, six oh four. Um, I believe, um, everything has been submitted through the town. Tamika, I think you sent an update today saying that everything was, um, signed off on from the town side with Board of Health and Fire Chief and everything. So, and the fees and everything for the common vic have been collected.
Yes.
Um, so is there anyone here from the public to speak on the common vic license? Does the board have any questions or comments? I believe they're still waiting on the A B C C, their A B C C license. Um, and I believe, if I understood correctly, they're not looking to open until they have received their full licensing process through the state.
That's correct. Yep, and there's, they're, right now, they're still going through some, um, like minor interior renovations. They're hiring staff. Um, but when I spoke to Cindy today, she said everything outside of waiting for the licor license is, is moving on very well.
Okay. And there's not really anything from the town perspective. I, I'm asking because I know we get a lot of questions as I, I'm sure all those board members get a lot of questions, um, that we can do to like, everything on the town side is done. It's just now the waiting game at the state level. And I think that's usually what, two to four months average?
Yeah, that actually has been three to four months. They submitted in November, so we were hoping by February, we might have an answer from them. Um, in the very beginning, when we first submitted, there was a couple, uh, bits of additional information that the A B C C needed. Um, both the town and the applicant got them back to them right away. And then we haven't heard anything else. But in this particular case, no news is good news. Um, so we anticipate the next thing that we'll hear is hopefully the issuance of the license. And, uh, once that comes through, uh, we'll bring it back to the board to sign and then they should be good to go.
Thank you. Is there any conversation from the board? Questions or anything?
Looks like the mail is exactly the same.
Yeah.
Yeah. At least initially, right? I mean, I think they had said that they might consider, once they were open, seeing how things were going, but, um.
Does A B C C approval? Do they have to come here again after they get that approval?
Yes, just for the board to sign the license.
Okay.
Yeah. But it's more of a formality at that point.
Right.
Um, if there's no other conversation, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Lederer.
Calvin, I.
And Switeman, I. And then I would entertain a motion, um, to approve the common vicu license for Rutland Tap and Table at two forty nine Main Street as presented.
So moved.
Any conversation? Roll call, Harry.
Sec- second, I.
Matt's an I.
Lederer.
Calvin, I.
Waitman, I. I'm excited to, I think town is excited to have someone, a restaurant, back in the center of town.
Yeah. Absolutely. Tired of driving to Holden.
Um, is there anyone here for public comment? Not tonight. Um, Mike, I see that you're on Zoom. Can you just confirm that you can hear us and we can hear you?
No problem, can hear you just fine.
Okay, good, we can hear you too, thank you. All right, I don't see anyone here for public comment. Moving into communications, member comments, announcements and town administrator update. Um, Happy New Year. It's been, uh, I think this is our second meeting. Our first meeting is a four, four in person. It's nice to see everyone. Um, we had a, uh, another sad death in town with police, former police chief Ralph Anderson passed away a few weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago. We want to extend our condolences to his family. Um, and everyone that he had influenced, uh, going to his wake and funeral. It was amazing to see how many lives in town he, um, was part of. And so, uh, it's, it's a loss for town, um, but we're glad that he's no longer suffering. Does anyone else have any comments or communication? Just as the weather's cold and, uh, snow, take care of your neighbors, keep an eye out on everyone. Um, always, if you have any questions or concerns about roads or sidewalks, um, please, um, reach out to D P W, um, or through our office, but generally right through D P W. Um, I believe there's fuel assistance available for, um, eligible, uh, qualified individuals through council and A G N, I believe. Is that correct? Is the contact? Um, and again, just keep an eye on your neighbors. Any other comments from the board? Austin, the floor is yours for town administrator update.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, uh, board members, just a few updates. Um, the fiber project, um, is still ongoing. Um, Phoenix Communications, their contractor, who's been working with to install the fiber, um, cabling, has completed, um, the initial phase of interconnecting all of the town buildings downtown that were not previously connected to the fiber network. So, um, that includes connecting town hall and the annex to the public safety building, uh, the town pool house to the public safety building and, uh, the wood studio to the public safety building. So that kind of creates a core internal network uptown, downtown, whatever you want to call it. Um, we are still waiting on approval from National Grid for, uh, extending the, the fiber optic cable to the community center and to the water treatment plant. Um, in lieu of the fiber optic not being installed, we have entered into a separate agreement with Spectrum for, at a much lower cost, individual internet services at those two facilities. Uh, they will be installing that tomorrow at those two facilities. Um, we're still, I think the goal of this grant was to save a lot less money for Rutland taxpayers. Um, I think we're still accomplishing that. Um, ultimately, I think when this is all complete, everything will run through the public safety building. There's a lot of benefits to that. Much larger server infrastructure, um, air conditioning, dedicated twenty-four seven operation. Um, so we're not relying on, you know, town clerk's office using also our server room in the town hall, things like that. So, um, kind of a dedicated internal, uh, network out of a twenty-four seven operation. So that is ongoing. Um, just a reminder that that is completely paid for by community compact dollars. Uh, want to welcome Jason Cobal, uh, new camera operator for, uh, the cable department. Actually, Jason's working right now. Uh, just a little bit about him. He is a, an Army veteran, uh, lives in Gardner and, uh, is excited to be a part of the cable studio. Uh, we are also advertising, uh, still advertising for a water operator position, uh, after the transition of, uh, Dan McCaruso. Uh, if you're interested, please reach out to the D P W. There's a lot of licensing, uh, with that particular position. Um, but, uh, we're looking for another operator. Uh, it's a good job for a good water department. So if you know of anyone who's interested, please, please reach out. Uh, town charter committee has scheduled their first official meeting for next Thursday, January thirtieth at six P M in this room. Uh, it will be kind of the organizational meeting, uh, election of, uh, committee officers, um, introduction, uh, to the members, but also there'll be an initial presentation from the Collins Center to the members, um, kind of about the charter process, things like that. Um, again, that is, um, next Thursday in this room at six P M. Um, I think the town clerk's office did a poke to the members. There's still a few members that have not been sworn in. Um, so we'll, if not, send another gentle reminder before they meet so they can organize. Um, and then the town staff, uh, received, uh, on Friday, a draft bylaw, uh, from Western Sampson for our ongoing stormwater work. So, uh, we received the draft stormwater management bylaw. Um, we're going back and forth with them right now. There's a few changes that need to be made just to be consistent with our current, uh, stormwater illicit discharge bylaw. Um, but we anticipate having that done to present to the select board to then, um, transition to the bylaw committee to begin that process for either the annual or special time meeting adoption. So, that's all I have for my update. Happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Austin? Austin, for the, um-
There'll be plenty later.
What's that?
There'll be plenty later.
Good.
Um, I have a question for the fiber optic piece for, um, uh, the building on Glenwood and the water treatment. The, um, we, I think you had mentioned waiting for National Grid. Is that because they own the poles? And so it's coordinating?
Yeah, they, even though, so I think you, board members are, are probably well aware of those poll petition hearings that we have. Those agreements have explicit language that say the town, um, or National Grid or Verizon shall make dedicated space for the town for three different purposes. Telephone, telegraph for fire and police purposes. Um, telephone and telegraph are some interesting terms. Uh, um, especially since I think one of those maybe doesn't exist anymore. Um, so we've been going back and forth with National Grid that, you know, I think it's our opinion that we have dedicated, we have rights to be able to use it. National Grid, I think disagrees. Um, so we have to go through a formal application process with National Grid for every pole. Um, so we did submit that, uh, two months ago and we've been waiting on them to get back to us just on the application status, which has delayed our ability to get on there and actually mount the, um, mount the equipment. So it's a fairly easy process once we have the approval. I think it took, well, absent some weather, it just took a couple of weeks just to get all the polls done around here. Um, but especially those are kind of some straight runs down, uh, Main Street, Glenwood and Wantuset and then obviously the access road to the D P W or to the water treatment plant. So, yeah, quite literally, it's just, just waiting on grid to get back to us. Not an uncommon thing, actually, the Department of Public Utilities and also Department of Telecommunications actually just put out sort of, sort of initial call for public comment from municipalities. Um, because I think of the, you know, rapid investment in infrastructure, especially for fiber infrastructure. Rutland's not the only town experiencing this challenge. Um, so I think the state regulators are also looking at ways to make this a little bit more efficient for towns. I don't think it's going to fix it before we need it, but, um, surely I think I've already started writing some things to send to them. Um, but I think we'll still be able to get it done before the grant expires.
And I know we had this conversation, thank you for that. And, um, the, there, I believe there had been conversation at one point about whether or not there was value to having the fiber optic go to Glenwood Elementary School also. But I believe because that's a school, that's a separate, is that, is my memory correct on that? I just want more for the public because I know we had this conversation and I just want it refreshed for, for public why it's not going, if it's going to the building on Glenwood, why it's not going down to the school.
Yeah, so we actually, in our initial sort of, uh, scope of work, we actually, from Phoenix Communications, we asked them to include all three schools, um, just as a part of our overall townwide fiber expansion project. Um, in looking at the, the grant, our cap, um, for what we could, we could receive was only two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The scope of work to include the schools was much higher than that. So, um, expanding the town fiber network to town buildings was kind of phase one with the hope of expanding to the schools at a future grant cycle. Um, I know that the schools already do have fiber very similar to what we did a few years ago. So they have their own fiber infrastructure. But I do believe just in the term, uh, and the, uh, you know, ability to have all town buildings connected to one network, I think there's a benefit for us and then also cost savings for the school district as well. So we're certainly looking at that, but just financially it didn't make sense for us for this round.
Thank you. And then the other question that I know I kind of hear periodically throughout town is the not including, the decision to not include the old fire station, Marshfield and the, and the, um, Wood House and those are, that they're under grant slash lease agreements with the, um, like the nonprofits, is that, I mean, can you elaborate just a little bit on that or?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I think that's a, uh, good description, I think, of why we chose not to include those. Um, candidly, we're, we were just looking for, to expand to public buildings that are currently used by the public. Um, you know, certainly, I think if the town wants to expand down the road to those buildings, but, um, these are all municipal buildings that are under day-to-day oversight of, of the town of Rutland um, and accessible to the public.
Thank you.
Um, one thing that, uh, I think is just going to be an overall benefit though of this project is, um, our ability to expand just the public wifi. So we've already been experimenting a little bit with, um, some of the public wifi. Actually, right now, um, you can actually, well, folks that are ice skating, um, we actually have wifi that's shooting down to the pool house. So you have access to the public wifi network right now. Um, one of the things that's a benefit when we have a fiber network on all buildings, we can do the same thing and have a greater area of public wifi around all the municipal buildings. So hypothetically, all of downtown, um, could have access to our public wifi network, which I think is just a greater benefit, um, for the residents and the general public.
Thank you.
Question, July fourth. People are on the common, using our wifi. Is there any limitation to how many people can get on it or use it? Is there a certain?
It probably is no different than like your home wifi network. It probably just slows down a little bit and maybe doesn't work as well. But, um, I mean, we've got a pretty good internet connection from Spectrum, especially because it's running off of public safety. But like with any network, it has its limitations. And the good thing is it is a separate connection from our town use, so it doesn't impact our public safety um, in some of our internal town networks.
That was, I guess, going to be one of my follow-ups is just making sure that the security side on the town, the town infrastructure, public safety as well as town business is, is well established. Thank you. Any other questions for Austin with this update?
If the board is amenable, since the town clerk's office is here, is the board amenable to taking, um, part C under new special business out of order? Um, it's a joint discussion with town clerk for just reviewing the process for board and committee meeting minutes. Um, is the board amenable to that?
No objection, no objection.
Okay. Thank you, Anita and Ben, for, for coming. I think we've had some conversation, uh, from our board as far as, um, having meeting minutes from all boards and committees, um, posted. And I know that there's been some, um, frustration from other boards and committees with even agenda posting. And so I think we, as a board, wanted to understand kind of the process that works for the clerk's office and if there's anything that we can, can do to facilitate that, whether that's asking kind of all the board and committee ma- meeting minutes to go through, like Tamika slash our office and then kind of funnel through to you or, or what's the best way to ensure that all of that is?
I, I mean, I think, I think the process that we're doing, it works so fine. Um, it granted, say in the last year or so, we haven't been, we haven't been pushing people for, for the meeting minutes. But, um, as soon as the election was over, that was one of the first. And after Ben very nicely thanked you, everyone who voted, got an additional six hours a week. Um, that's one of the first projects that he took on. And I think Ben can tell you better that, what the response was. And he reached out to every, every board in town.
Yeah, every board and committee got, you know, a notice with all their missing meeting, meeting minutes throughout the year of twenty twenty four. Um, and we gave them, we did this the middle of December, kind of, and gave them till the first of the year to kind of respond. You know, what's, what's going on? Do you have them just not sent to us? Um, and a lot of it was no quorum or they didn't have a meeting or it was canceled. And we just were expecting minutes, so that's why they were empty. So we made all those updates on the website that said that it was canceled or no quorum or anything like that. And we got a good response from some of them, you know.
Right awa- right away.
The boards, there's, right away, they were just like, oh, here they are, kind of thing. We just haven't sent them. Um, there are a couple of boards that haven't, still haven't responded. Um, we haven't gotten very few meeting minutes all year long.
I think that was one of, if I may, I think that was one of the things that we realized, um, and anyone on the board, feel free to contribute, was that, um, if a meeting's posted and not held because there's not quorum, I think that they didn't, we didn't realize that it was still considered as an open meeting. Um, so I think how to, to improve that communication. I think also, um, we're working on, I think, uh, I would like to have us work on a handbook to kind of intro to new board and committee members and just what it means and how, how the minutes should be handled. Because I do think some of the feedback we got was, well, we have them and they're approved, but we just didn't know what to do with them. And so there's a disconnect. And so that's, I think, what I was hoping was to better understand what works for you and your process and how we can facilitate that as, you know, many of the committees were the appointed authority, not all. Um, and as, you know, obviously the electives are different, but.
Yeah, I think, um, we get the notices from most, most boards and committees if they postpone or have, afterwards, they don't have a quorum. So I think some of it was just that the last year or so, we've been so busy that we haven't pushed like we did in the past. But there's, I think, um, especially when the charter commission gets going, I think that it might be a good idea to look and see what they recommend for meeting minutes and, and posting requirements because pretty much the open meeting law is very, very vague. It just says timely. But timely for a committee like yours that meets every two weeks and has Tamika, you know, those minutes get posted a whole lot quicker than there are some that only meet every other. So you can't say, you know, that few, so many in the next month. But, um, the one good thing is, is that all meeting minutes, whether they're approved or not, are subject to the open meeting, I mean, to public records law. So I always felt even if they are, um, if they're not coming to us in a timely fashion, if someone puts in a request, whether they're, like I said, whether they're have been approved or not, they have to be provided to the requestor within the ten business days. But, and also until, um, our last redo of the general bylaws, there was nothing in it that, um, even let people know any committees that they should be giving the, the minutes to the town clerk's office. Um, we did add that language, but because of the language of the open meeting law, we added it similar in the same kind of vague way. But I think that that's something that a charter commission could, could be a little clearer on in, in the process, you know? But, um, but, but that was, that was a good step. But that was only under the appointed committee, so it doesn't. But we don't have anybody that, you know, says, no, I'm not giving you your, the minutes or anything like that so that everything, everybody is, is willing to comply. And, uh, and Ben did a great job getting response. So that's one of his favorite things to do is to, some of the notices out to people. But, um, the other thing that we've been, um, been working on is the ethics compliance and, um, through the skill burst system. And actually, Austin was asking me about it today, that's why I thought of it. Um, basically, everybody, um, has to renew the short acknowledgement in, in twenty twenty five. And then, but we sent out, uh, notices to all committees and we went back to our old Excel spreadsheet because even though the state commission site, it's helpful, um, I think on, on other people's ends also and, and generating, you know, letters, I mean, quick emails that if you're, once a week, we have it set up for now. So I'm finding that people will get two in a row and then they'll say, okay, that's it. I'm going to take this thing even if it's an hour. Um, so we did send emails out to all committees. We've got almost two hundred users in this, in the skill burst system, but that's, that's employees along with, and we've, um, we, I, we finished public safety and D P W, um, and let them all know who, you know, who is due to take them so that they're starting to come in slowly. And, uh, um, and like I said, we've alerted every committee, so we're getting there. But, um, and at some point, you know, I don't know if it's something that your board would like to see who's in compliance before appointments are made and, you know, in June, things like that, but.
I saw Paul and then Harry.
I can turn my hat around to committee chairman for a moment. Okay, if we have someone scheduled to come to the meeting and for some odd reason cannot be there and we have to postpone it, does that still go through as like an unquorum meeting?
Yeah, if you, yeah, if you don't.
Okay, alright.
And if you just shoot us an email, like the next day or something like that, then it won't make the list of, you know, that we're looking for meeting minutes, so.
I'm fine, okay, thank you.
She answered the question. In terms of how do you want it? Email on the report itself with a copy saying, you know, uh-
Email is probably the best.
Yeah, email is, is, yeah.
Okay.
And, and to both of us, it's, yeah, just as easy.
And then I know, um, and I don't know if it's been super recently. I know kind of back over the summer and the fall, there had been some concerns with agendas not getting posted in a ti- timely enough manner, within the forty-eight hours required for the, the meeting. And so I think in some of, and I believe some of it was the hope that in kind of redoing the meeting agenda request was to, to streamline that on your end, but just kind of for the, I want to say for the public, but really for the, the boards and committee members, what's the best avenue to ensure that it's getting to the clerk's office to be posted timely?
Probably the best is not to wait until, you know, exactly the forty-eight hours. You know, if you go out another day, that's more reasonable. Um, but, I mean, we've been posting agendas to the website for twenty years and I can only think of a couple of instances where there was any, any kind of a, a real problem that they did not get posted. Um, sometimes we don't, if we get an agenda in the morning, um, we don't always post, we tend to- Um sometimes we don't, if we get an agenda in the morning, um we don't always post, we tend to wanna wait because we know we're gonna get three or four more a day, so that it's easier to go in and do them all at once. Plus even um the best boards and committees often send us, the busiest ones often send us a revision and a revision. So sometimes if we, you know, if we post it in the first fifteen minutes, we know we're gonna be redoing it, so we put it off. But like to my knowledge, I can think of probably in twenty years, two meetings that did not get posted, so that they would not be able to meet.
Um and I do like how on the, with the new website, you can go in and see the revision history, 'cause I think that was one of my my other questions, is that
Yeah.
I mean, obviously the revisions are a pain, but I think we wanna encourage boards and committees to to utilize it also,
Yeah.
because it, we have the revision history right there on the website also.
And the the one thing that we, and I I think we need to just reinforce this with people. If when somebody's sending us the revised, if they relabel it as revised, it really helps us a lot. So that especially within the same day, if we're going in, that we're not reposting the one that that isn't, you know, and I and we we understand why there's revisions, so that.
Yeah.
Um we used to make note of what the revision was on the old website. But this one, it kind of because they're both there, if anybody really is interested, they can compare the two, so. Because on the old website, they came down and then just the new one, why not?
But I guess, I mean, I think I I don't wanna take the floor from the rest of the board, but I think with um the assistant town clerks uh expanded hours, it's been a little bit helpful, but I was wondering also if there's benefit to consider having like a backup, whether it's like select board TA office or something, just in case that, you know, it's election season and the clerk's office is swamped or or something.
I mean, A- Austin, Austin can, has the power to go in and 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 to uh put an agenda up if it if it comes down to that, so.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's just a matter of how, and this is probably brainstorming, how that works, because if they're emailing the clerk's office, then it's in that email bucket versus accessible to to everyone. And maybe there becomes an email that's like for agen- agendas and minutes or something that is uh more of a communal. Um I don't know, I'm just brainstorming.
I mean, I I don't, I don't think that there's been, you know, problems enough to to warrant that. I don't think that, you know, anybody else, that would just, if if that email was opened up to, you know, more people, how then do they know whether we're in the process of posting it and things like that? But it's something we can think about if if we have problems.
Does anyone else on the board, Jen, type?
Just, it sounds like you've got pretty much everybody caught up, are there any boards or committees that you're still having a hard time with?
Pretty, well, Ben.
Mo- I mean, there's three ones that we just haven't gotten minutes for, but there's some working on them and.
Yeah, and and I think one that probably owes probably six. They've let Ben know that they're trying to get them, I think some of it might be a change in who's taking the minutes and and things like that, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, as long as we know that it's being worked on.
It's coming, yeah, we won't let it slide.
Okay.
And I think, I mean, I think if you're having, like, if you notice that there's a an issue or whatever, just kind of let us know through our office, so that that way, not necessarily immediately a public meeting call out, but if we if we are the appointing authority, then you know, knowing that, or if it's another board that's the appointing authority or whatever, um or if they're elected, I think most of the electeds have um
Do.
a staff or or dedicated staff or something, but I'm not one hundred percent sure, so. Thank you, is there anything on your end from us?
Um, no, other than um people have been asking when nomination papers are gonna be available. Um you've got the date in your head?
Um, it's Monday.
February. February tenth.
Tenth, I believe.
Okay.
Yes, Monday, February tenth, they'll be available at eight AM.
And other than that, we're still waiting for um town census to be mailed, 'cause we outsourced it for the, this is the second year. And we thought it was going out last week, but um we haven't seen it in our mailboxes yet, but it'll be here fast and furious soon. But uh we're doing lots of dog licenses anyway.
I was gonna say, the town census usually has the dog license application included in it, or they can come in ahead of time and.
And and Ben developed one, um people can pay on Unipay and Ben also developed one that they can actually fill out the information and send it to email it to us. And I think a lot of people are taking advantage of that.
Yeah, I think we had over a hundred and fifty of the online, with the new website, the form, the middle thing, over a hundred and fifty do the 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 dog licensing last year.
And 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 also is um I know a lot of people, unless you have had a second grader lately, don't know that our second grade um students that help us choose the dog tag every year and they love it. We we take our tabulators over there and they uh they do their ballot, insert it, and then we run the tape at the end of the day. And they write their names, which we wouldn't suggest this in an election, but they write their names on the back of the ballot and then it goes in their Rutland book at the end of the year, so it's 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 wonderful, it really is.
Have there been any protests following the results or?
Uh no, but a couple of years ago, I had one little girl who uh was not in the majority, asked if she could change her vote because she didn't like voting for a loser. But the kids are, they're so cute, they really are, but I think, I mean, second grade teachers are amazing, I don't know how they do it, you know.
I love that you guys do that too, to kind of get get them.
Yeah, it's nice, and our vendors are great, they they do it for nothing, so, so they have to program everything and do the ballots, so.
Yeah. That's awesome. That's awesome, thank you, sure.
So not to clog up the email, I normally send, when I send stuff to you, I send it to both of you, this one is fine?
Yes, please. No.
Yeah, I'll send it to both of you.
Both.
'Cause if one's not in or the other, it's it's both, definitely both.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds good, alright.
And then we we communicate so that we know.
Okay.
And then if whoever posted, we reply and let you know that it's posted, we reply all so that so that we get it.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming in.
You appreciate it.
And like I said, just let us know if there's stuff, you know, and especially I think we've been trying to be more mindful as we get into appointments and everything, just making sure that um, you know, not necessarily that they're doing it, but that they're aware that they need to do it, it's more the the process and.
And 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 publicity for the getting the ethics done would be good.
Yeah.
So we're working on that too, so I think we.
I think I'm sometimes guilty because I have to do it for work and so that's the weird like.
If if it's the same, I don't know if it would be the same one that you take, 'cause there's one that's designed specifically for municipalities. But um but I do have people that work for other towns and um so we can just, we just get a copy of their certificate and we update the the system with that, so. But I know I just got my first reminder, so I'm due.
Very good, anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your meeting.
Thanks, you too.
We'll go watch it.
Um I do, I was looking for something else and I had found in kind of a search, like a little bit of a how, like an intro to town government, and a lot of it was like the boards and committees and who the appointing authority is and what the the membership makeup is. But then also I think kind of inclusive in that is is the roles and responsibilities for for minutes and everything also.
Yeah, and the other thing is, is I think a lot of people don't know that we need to get notified if there is a resignation, because you can't appoint until we do our paperwork, so little things like that.
Right.
And I think that's where um charters come in and and they just define everything, so I'm excited it's starting. Good night.
Thanks Anita, thanks Ben. So um I'm sorry to be bouncing around a little bit. Um we have, I believe the library is planning to come around seven fifteen, I believe. So if we are okay to bounce back to um old business, um is the committee or is the board comfortable with that? Um we can um if we have, uh is everybody comfortable with continuing conversation on special act? Um for section seven, eight and nine. Um I believe these are the last outstanding sections. Um we had asked previously if anybody had significant comments to send them ahead, um Tamika, I don't think you had gotten anything. Um and so this is kind of to finish out and then um we have some outstanding questions to go to legal um to get clarified and then also in um consider having other elected boards um or individuals uh provide feedback as well. Um so section seven talks about the ballots. Um is there anything that anybody has for any of seven, eight or nine?
Looks pretty clean to me.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's mostly just
I'm fine with it.
ballot looks like.
Yep.
I don't have anything.
Yeah, and if I may, just, and I know this isn't in seven, eight and nine, but going back, I'm not sure, I think it might be section two. I didn't know if the board wanted to reconsider two hundred versus two fifty, now that we know what M G- that the MGL is is two hundred to call a special election and not two fifty. I just wanted to get clarification on that.
Thank you for that, 'cause I think I was under the impression that we had kind of said whatever, we said two fifty because that's what we were basing off of the that to call a special, but I think that the the rationale for the board was whatever the it takes to call a special is what we wanted.
Yeah.
Um but I don't wanna make that assumption, so um I think, you know, MGL spells it out for a a special town meeting and to me, it's, I'm I I would be comfortable saying whatever MGL dictates for a special town meeting is
Mm-huh.
I'm comfortable with, so.
What is two hundred?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is that?
I'm fine with two hundred.
Hmm.
I I just didn't wanna set a bar low at fifty, you know, so I'm okay with that.
Right. And I I liked that there was some other rationale for what it what it was and um that we could point to that, you know, we're basing it off of something else.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Thank you, Tamika. Um so section eight um is explicitly says that any elected official who is sought to be recalled cannot be a candidate to succeed him him or herself. Um the, I think that this is important based on some of the the ways some of the other um recalls have played out in the state that if it doesn't explicitly say, then you can be on on the ballot to be recalled and on the ballot for reelection in the, on the same ballot. Um is the board comfortable with that?
Mm-huh. Hmm.
I'm I'm, yeah, I I I think it's I can see it going either way. Um I think in some of the examples that I looked at, some of them didn't have this provision included, but um I think I'd be more in favor of having it in there.
I was gonna say, I think that this is one of those areas that has definitely been at the the decision of the of the community.
Right.
Um and I believe it was, was it New Bedford that had the recall that had the recall and then um.
Yes. And he was reelected.
Right, he was reelected on the same ballot, is that?
Yeah.
Fall River.
Oh, Fall River, sorry, sorry, New Bedford.
Fall River, yeah.
That's a second. I'm okay with that. Yeah.
Um and then section nine um is just that um any person who is removed from an office under this act or is resigned from office following the issuance of recall um under section four, so essentially had the threat of recall um before the certification um cannot be appointed to any town office board committee um for two years after such removal or rec- resignation. That's just kind of, I think, similar to the cooling off period. Um I don't remember off the top of my head what the cooling off period is for um uh ethics, but I believe a lot of it is one to two years.
I um, I do have an issue with two years. Um because that spans quite a few boards, it spans a long time for rehabilitation. So to me, two years seems like a long time where nobody can, he cannot be appointed to anything after that. It's kind of like a stigma that stays with him, with him or her, particularly, well, we don't know what the aggrievance is against them, or for what reason they were recalled. So two years is to me a little too long, so that's my opinion, I actually was thinking of a hundred and eighty days.
Well, this would be after the election is held and they actually are recalled, so at that point, we should know what
Right, but that's what I'm saying.
Being recalled for.
If it's something minor, you're holding this guy back for two years or this girl back for two years. That's a long for the town, particularly if it was a nice, good individual who was smart and sharp. Because nowhere in here does it prevent him from running again.
Right.
So he can run again in six months. So here we are, holding him out for two years when he can run for public office for six, in six months. I think two years is a little bit much.
So I think.
Not that somebody would wanna do that after they've been, you know, but I think holding somebody up for two years just kind of goes against, I mean, we send guys away to prison for two, for and some of them get out in a year. So that just seems a little when we have the, if the guy, if the individual comes up to be appointed anything, we already have this information on file, what happened.
I'm just looking at the um Ethics Commission, I think most of it is one year cooling off.
Yeah.
Um so I I mean, I was I I'm uncomfortable with two years, I would also, I think, being co- be would be willing to consider going down to one. I wouldn't be much, I wouldn't, I don't think I'd be comfortable going much less than, less than one, especially since the um
Ethics Committee says one year?
One year for uh, it's like if you have eh business, um like, it's not for um like a recall specifically, but it's
Mm-hmm.
um if you participated in a manner, in a matter and then you're going to continue to act on it or whatever, it's a year.
So why is it, why is it one year? I I don't know.
These, I just, these are the ones that I have just been looking at, I have a three year, two, two years, and this one's one year, twelve months, so there's.
I mean, if you look at on here, it says failure to take the oath of office within thirty days of the date of election. That means you can't appoint somebody for two years if you just didn't take the oath of office. That's that's pretty extreme in my opinion.
Well, and I think we also need to consider that whole section might go away, depending on what legal says. We we talked about if we should have no provisions defined in section two.
Okay, so I guess then my follow up question would be, by what provisions do we turn with this one or two years? If we have no provisions to go by, how strict are we gonna be when that person, when this time comes up? I mean, just take the 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 uh failure to take the state's Ethics Commission training.
I mean, that's also assuming that you have the the requisite to call a a recall
I mean, that's.
I mean.
Right.
um for that reason, I mean, it it could be a reason to be for a recall, but it's not guaranteed that it would
Yeah.
garner support. Um and I don't think that, I don't think that we would say, the way I envision it, and Harry, maybe I'm mis- I'm partially misunderstanding, is whatever in section nine, whatever it is, it's not gonna be dependent on the rationale for the recall, it's just gonna be a flat like
Well, if we do that.
time of
Yeah.
you know, whatever, X number of time or X amount of time.
Yeah, I mean, I could, I could, you know, I could probably go along with one year considering some of the offenses on here that could be there, but I think two years is doing a dishonesty to any citizen in the town for some of the infractions that we could look at. So I would, I would go with you on one year, but I think two is too much. Again, this is just on, just on being appointed, this has nothing to do with running for an election again, 'cause they can do anything they want.
I I think, I mean, I I agree with you, Leah, I don't think I would be comfortable going any less than a year. I still would prefer two, I mean, this is like we talked about for pretty egregious offenses and if I was still seated on a board, I would have a hard time appointing somebody that had been recalled from an office. Just if that's what the towns agreed, that's what they said they wanted to happen. Um I I'd have to have some hard convincing that that person should be appointed to a a board or committee for X amount of time. Um so my preference would still be two years, but I wouldn't wanna go less than like a year, yeah.
Um and just kind of going back to reread section four, right, because this is basically um any person who's been removed or has resigned following the issue of the recall petitions under section four.
Mm-hmm.
Um and so that's um section four. Section four is. Um, not just to to set forth the recall, it's for the actual reason, right? My, sorry, my brain is all over this thing.
Well, if if you wanna keep it at two years, then my issue would be, under section two, that we take out section subsection one and subsection two.
I think that that was, I I think that that was, I mean, Jen, I think s mentioned this, that one of the questions that we have for section two is essentially to eliminate all the all the reasons for why we um, could could for the grounds for which a recall may be initiated. Um, so that it would be um, because this is saying that it could include, but is not limited to
Right.
all of these six sections under two, but I think we had said in our previous conversation is just to basically eliminate all those rationales. Um, and how then is it determined that it's a, you know, a a valid reason?
I guess I look at this and say, okay, how tough, if you violate the take the vote of office for thirty days of the date of election, do you get to vote on a committee? No, you haven't taken the oath of office, but because of that, you're gonna be denied two years sitting on a committee, being appointed for that. I think that's a little egregious.
Well, that's.
See, if you're found guilty by the State Ethics Commission, or Division of Open Government, or Evicto, that's a totally different story for two years. I don't think we can lump all that together in that two-year scenario.
And I I I under I hear and I don't disagree with you, Harry, I think my conversation on that is that that I think we're questioning and likely going to take out all of these reasons anyway, but even if we didn't, even if it was an option to have a recall, it's not a guarantee that that anyone, a major that there would be enough individuals that would want to move forward with it.
Right.
Um, and then vote in favor of it, because they very well could see like, to your point, that, okay.
You didn't take, you didn't take the oath, that's not worth my supporting.
Right.
It's it's a lot to ask, you know, to do something like that, but um, basically, you know, if you're looking at something like that, basically, it could come down to let the punishment fit the crime.
And I don't, and I think the whole, the whole point of between, but uh, the whole point around taking out the reasons from section two is that it could be any number of reasons, eh, whatever the petitioner decides is what they wanna submit the petition for, and we can't come up with
I understand.
well, if it's this offense, it's only this amount of time that you can't serve on a committee. This one, if you do this, it's only six months, if you do this, it's two years, we can't.
No, I'm saying pick one, you pick a year, pick one, but don't tell somebody that if you rob a store, you're going to jail for ten years. If you commit murder, you're going to jail for ten years. That is what this says, and I don't agree with that. I think the punishment doesn't fit the crime in this case.
Well, that's, you could do, you could do the opposite too, if it's, you know, a a serious egregious offense, if they do commit some ethical issue and they are recalled, then maybe a year is not enough, so it's.
And the question becomes too. You are denying even future boards the ability to appoint somebody
Mm-hmm.
before two years. So you're taking away future board's ability to make a decision on an individual who may not have done a lot wrong.
I think that's up to the town if they choose to vote to remove them from office, they, if the majority votes to remove them, then they feel that they did do enough not to be there.
But you've been to town meetings.
It's not a town meeting though, it's an election.
No, this is a town meeting or election that says you can't, you can't run again, you can't be an elected official, it doesn't say you can't be appointed.
Right.
Nowhere in that bill or that says, we're gonna recall you.
Yeah. Right.
Okay, and that's the problem I have. We are throwing a full net over everything here, and I think it's the net's too broad. So, uh, one year should be to me the limit, if we're if we're taking all this out, one year should be the limit by which we don't know who's gonna be elected up or or uh, subjected to a recall. And I just think it's too much. I don't think this board should be putting that kind of of that that kind of punishment on anybody, 'cause we have the right not to appoint. But to say, don't run within, we can't appoint you within two years, I think is terrible, but it's terrible for the town.
I I don't necessarily disagree with you, Harry, in the sense that that the board or committee would have the 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 appointing group would have the option to not appoint, um, if they wanted to be appointed. I also, I don't ha I don't personally have any issues with the two years, because I think that um, if it's uh, enough, if it warrants enough to get through kind of section four of the act, that there's something there and feelings and also feelings, but also what's to say that someone isn't just really bitter and upset about the whole process and needs some additional co cooling off time as well as on the town side, um, so I look at it a little bit of of that way, but I hear what you're saying also, Harry, as far as the the appointing authority would always have the option to not appoint, um.
So we voting, is this a vote?
So, no, this isn't a vote, but.
Just, yeah, just discussing.
This, I think, yeah, so I'm I'm hearing, I think, Tom, what's kind of your?
No, I understand Harry's point, I guess it all depends on the on the so-called offense, right? I mean, it really comes down to the offense, if it's if it's.
Exactly.
But we don't know, 'cause we're not gonna list anything.
Right.
That's my problem.
Again, I, no, I totally understand your point, um. It's hard to just agree or disagree on a time where we don't know what we're talking about, but.
I mean, I guess we can, if the board's comfortable, when we, I mean, Jen, you said you've done a little bit of other research, right, you had you had seen one that was three years, two that were two years, one that was one year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it kind of seems a little bit all all over the place.
Of course.
We know that the cooling off period for ethics, which is different than a, an like a an egregious finding or potential egregious finding um, is one year, um, but.
Can we go on up to two years?
Um. I was gonna say, we could see if it's, if what legal says as far as saying up to two years or one, two, two years or something, but also maybe ask for feedback from the, if we're going to the other electeds with this kind of what's their their preference, knowing that um, it sounds from our previous conversation, the will of the board was to see if we could remove um, essentially all the subsections under two anyway. Um, and so that it would be a a an open-ended rationale that at least um, fifty or more register, or we had said, sorry, two hundred or more registered voters may initiate the process, and then we would have to get through that and then continue on um with the the additional um, petitions.
Mm-hmm.
Ten percent.
So, it's um, which is uh, not less than, I believe we s stayed on ten percent, correct, with that one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so it's not like it's just that initial kind of two hundred votes, there's there's some additional work that's that's done there in in a twenty one um, day period.
Day period.
So. So I think that that's where I'm comfortable saying two years, because I think it's a a high bar, um, but I I hear and I'm respectful and and can view the the other, the one year's con conversation.
Mm-hmm.
So it sounds like, is that, is the board comfortable with that, um, kind of asking legal if we, if the there can be language somehow around um, one to two years or up to two years or something, but then also seeking uh, input from other boards, the other electeds at least, to see um, what their sense is, especially if we pull out all of those subsection rationales.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, getting some more background, sure.
Legal might have input too on if they see a more common.
Yeah.
And then section ten is just that this act shall take effect upon its passage, um, so.
If it's one to two years, who decides that?
Right, well, and so I think that that's that would have to be the clarification from legal is to like, how be like it's.
Right.
Because it should be explicit, like, you know, if
It should be, yeah.
if it's if it's a range, then you might as well keep
Right.
section two.
Right.
explicitly call out which
Which.
I guess are more serious and we.
Right.
Right. And I guess I'm not comfortable saying up to two years, because then it could be zero or one month, you know, zero or one month or whatever. Um, like I said, I would I'm comfortable with two, I understand and hear the the one side and I I could not, I'm not totally opposed to it, but.
Let's see what Tamika says.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
S and Tamika, I think that that kind of, we have some questions for legal and then um, I don't know if it makes sense to kind of get some of the conversation from legal out of the way and then disseminate it to the um, electeds. Um, or if it makes sense to send out to the electeds with our comments also, so that we can kind of collate any additional questions, so it's not a whole bunch of back and forth with legal.
If I may, I think if it makes sense, we'll at least get it out to the boards and and committees, because um, some of them don't meet as often as others do, so that way you could ensure that it was on one of their next agendas, um, but just for my knowledge, is the board's intention to have this go for the spring town meeting in May? And if so, did you wanna set kind of like a a deadline goal of when you hope to have the feedback from the elected boards, so that you can then continue the process forward?
Yeah, I think the original hope was to have it uh, available for the spring annual town meeting.
Okay.
Um, and I would have to look back at kind of the dates and everything, 'cause I think we would normally be setting the warrant in.
So last year, we closed the warrant April first, we opened it late March and closed it April first, so I'm just trying to think of enough time for the boards to have it,
Yeah, I see.
but also kind of to have an end date, so that you can then get the final, the final draft collated, then maybe do a public information session.
Right.
That type of thing.
Get the comments back from legal.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think if we ask for feedback kind of by the end of February, beginning of March, I'm not sure when they meet, does that seem like there's end of February, then legal to collate and then?
Yeah, I I think I would be hesitant to go into March to
Yeah.
to extend that into March, but I would say within the month of February, all of the elected boards would have an opportunity to meet.
Okay, does that timeline work for everybody? Thank you. Thank you, Tamika. I was gonna say.
So what are we going to submit to the boards or attorney, one or two years?
So we're gonna ask for their, I think there's gonna be a note that the board, yeah, and I think we're gonna ask, we're gonna submit to them all of our kind of comments
Your opinion?
Yes.
that we are going to bring to legal also, so that they can see that it's still a work in in progress, and we're trying to eliminate a lot of that back and forth from
Yep.
from.
So when we put that on there, section nine will be to consider an option of one or two years?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, hello, library.
Hello.
Hi.
Are you all here? I, yes, okay, is the board amenable to skipping around again? And going back to um, under new s new and special business, a joint meeting with library board of trustees, discussion of updating town building policy as it relates to the library?
Mm-huh.
Okay.
Can we open the meeting?
Oh, do we, should we open a meeting, 'cause there is a full board here?
You didn't post.
Oh, okay. Probably should.
Alright.
Okay, nevermind, forget that I mentioned that.
Did they post?
Do we post this? No, sorry. You didn't. No, we didn't. We were invited. But it was posted in the agenda, your agenda.
Okay.
Well.
Um.
Whatever's necessary.
Okay. Um.
We're all here.
Yeah, technically, yeah.
Nothing's happening.
Yeah, it just got real quiet.
Thank you, library, for attending, um, I think as you are probably aware, we uh, are looking to update our um, a lot of our policies. Last year, we kind of did bylaws, and this year, we're looking at policies. One of the big policies that we've been looking at is building use policy. Um, and they're kind of piecemeal right now between um, the building on Glenwood and the library and everything, and we understand that the library as an elected board with trustees, has different rules and process than the other um, solely municipal buildings. Um, and so, some of the feedback that we've gotten from the community and everything, we wanted to see how we could work with you in putting together a more comprehensive policy, um, that's not too restrictive to to your your piece, but also um, is a little bit more streamlined on the municipal side as well, so, thank you for being here.
Sure. Uh, maybe we should introduce ourselves first. Um, I'm Ruth Rivezi, I'm the chairperson, to my left is.
I'm Jean Grant, I'm the secretary.
Rich Lopez.
Shelly Mitchell.
Professor.
Anita Byron.
And Carrie, our director?
The director.
Um, yeah, um, Tamika had um, reached out to us, uh, shared some policies from other communities. Um, we ha we actually have a policy around use of meeting space in the library itself. Uh, so we, I guess we saw this as an information exchange, as far as we wanted to make sure you know what exists in terms of the library's perspective now. We do host um, a pretty large number of meetings every month, uh, in comparing some of the other documents that we got from other communities. I mean, we don't charge a fee um, for using the library. Um, we open it up to any nonprofit organization, we don't allow profit-making people to use the space. Uh, I noticed other communities require insurance and a background check for people that use the library, we we don't have those kinds of rules, um, and we don't require a security deposit. Um, Carrie does currently manage the scheduling for the space, and we've had some quick conversations with Austin's team around, you know, a a calendar for the entire public space in the town, um, which, you know, we're not opposed to, but we don't want it to restrict the access people already have for the library. Um, I don't know, if people have other comments you wanna make about, look, 'cause I know we all look that the the documents over, so you know, we certainly see the library as um, the community's heart, and we always say that at town meeting, uh, but um, and we don't want to restrict what peop what activities and things can can be used, I mean, um, we allow people to get a key to use it after hours when we don't have staff here. Carrie pretty much manages that, and uh, we really haven't had problems with that. Uh, we do occasionally have to follow up with people, because they don't leave the space in the same condition that they found it. Um, but um, we, you know, clearly wanna be part of this conversation and uh, we have opinions, no. And we, you know, we have, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at our policy around it, we updated it in the last few years, so, twenty twenty-two. So, um, so we're glad to have a chance uh, to talk about it.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Um, I think some of the conversation that that we had had, um, I think one of the big biggest ones was the scheduling piece and just not necessarily, um, but more viewing what's available when, um, and not necessarily that we are doing the actual scheduling, but just a more comprehensive schedule. I know there's been a couple instances, um, that there's been some potential double bookings or or whatever, and mistakes happen, we have it eh, you know, everywhere, um, and so it's not, again, to try to take anything away from anybody, but just more, is there a way that we can have more public access viewing as to what's available. I also know, I've been here before, when different groups may have been bouncing around, because they couldn't get they thought they had booked something, they couldn't get in, or, you know, it, they thought it was when Century Tree was open, they thought that they had the back meeting space and that was double booked, and then they they ended up here and because there was another meeting going on and they were able to get in and everything, but again, it's how to to ensure that everything is taken care of, because if the group that has assigned the meeting is the last, isn't the last one out, then it are all the lights turned off, is door, you know, door locked or or whatever that
Right.
that may be also, so and some of that conversation is to kind of how to streamline that and make sure that that um, the building is taken care of as well.
Yeah, one idea could be, um, we talked about this briefly, um, some kind of like scheduling software where you like sync up the different meeting spaces, but then the actual request goes to like who's in charge of that space. Um, 'cause then that would be a way to like see calendars, I mean, I'll, I don't know like what the town is on right now for emails, 'cause we we don't have emails for the town, but even if it was, eh, even if it was something like u using the existing software. even if it was, it, even if it was something like u- using the existing software, like whether that's like Microsoft or Google, I don't know what it is, but maybe Google Calendars or some kind of like Microsoft Calendar that, you know, you can set up the different permissions, like that's, that's kind of like a low-hanging fruit. And then something more advanced would be like a more official scheduling software, there's like different options, but um, I think, I think that would be a possible idea, um, just, yeah.
I think Austin has, I think through our, um, website software, there's a built-in kind of scheduling, Austin, is that?
Yep, so this is it, so uh, we've been, thank you, ma'am chair, uh, we've been piloting uh, on the town website, uh, the facilities function, um, which allows us, I'll just go back to viewing all facilities. So we've, we're just using three facilities right now, so the annex conference room, this room and the wood studio conference room. So for example, um, this room, if you, let me click this, of course not up sharing. Um, you can see the calendar, um, of reservations, so, um, looks like this was initially booked by Concom.
Yeah, it was.
Um, so this is an opportunity for, um, staff and members of the public to to see all meeting spaces on the system, see if it's available and then, um, there's a request a reservation function. Um, so you can directly request online and we have the ability, so for example, managed by Carrie for the library rooms, for example, it would go directly to her. Um, and she could go into this and approve it or not approve the system. So, it it it, it's not perfect, but it does
Yeah.
kinda show you high level, especially if you're in a meeting, you're talking about scheduling the next one.
Hmm.
Um, you can kinda take care of reserving the room right here.
One thing as an interim step, I'd maybe say for this is knowing what the meeting rooms are available townwide. I mean, cause the library has two of them and we have, you know, holds up to this many people, it's these, you know, accessories. But I feel like as a first step, I'd say, take an inventory of what's available, figure out like who's in charge of those rooms and then like have a meeting of the minds to come together to, you know, add more after like whatever happens with this pilot, so.
Yeah.
I was just, like, I like this idea, I just, it could get very wildly out of control with, depending on how many meeting rooms. And then you'd have to go into like color coding and all that, so.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, man, I think we're using it at just at a very high level right now, just because the the rooms that we have on there aren't very complicated, right?
Right, right, exactly, yeah.
Um, they're just kind of regular smaller conference rooms. Um, whereas for example, the community center has some more space that has maybe a little bit more comprehensive uses, you know, for example, the kitchen, right?
Right.
Um, but it, but I think that this facility is maybe a little bit easier to manage and especially, um, where we have obviously cable managing this room, um, and then the library of the other rooms, so, um.
And the other thing too is you might wanna build in like checks for different things, you know, cause like with the library spaces, it has to be essentially like n- nonprofit, you know, can't charge.
Yep, so we, we create a custom form for that.
Yeah, I know.
Um, so you know, are you a nonprofit, so it doesn't, it's basically like a, it's basically like a Google form in some respects, right?
Right, right, good. Google form, yeah.
Um, but each facility, we can, um, you know, we can add those questions. So again, using the example of the, of the community center, for example, right? If the potential use is to have, um, someone reserving the kitchen for whatever reason. Will you be cooking food? Yes, sure, that triggers a whole other set of questions, you know, do you have a food service, things like that, right?
Yeah. I suppose. Certain things, yeah.
Um, whereas again, this is a little bit more simple, but we can add those questions that also fit in with it, within your policy, but we can also explicitly add your policy right on there, so people, as they're reserving the room, they can directly see what the library trustees' um use policies are.
And the other thing too is like, you know, like Carrie goes on vacation, who is her backup? Like who's the backup for the calendars now, so that would all, we also need to be kind of in place
Yep.
to keep everything going.
I think we'd work directly with with you folks, um, you know, just like who's the backup now for Carrie with it, with with it right now, right?
Right.
So.
Right.
Um, you know, I think we could talk about, just like we had an earlier discussion about agendas with the town clerk in minutes, right? Like what's the backup there, I think, especially for this, cause the people are always reserving these spaces, I think it, to your point, it's important to have that.
And I think for, I think for this board's hope is to get the policies updated and obviously, so it's important working with you for this building use policy, but then having it available, because I think some of the, there's some misconception in the public also that it's not only nonprofits and it's, you know, maybe certain homeowners associations or something are able to, but then a group that wants to offer something that was grant-funded couldn't or doesn't, or, you know, how are Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts different than some other pay-for, you know, membership? And so, that's not, it's just some of the conversa- you know, some of the conversation where if there's a clear building use policy that points to it's, it's clearly line outlined and not, not coming across as as subjective.
Right.
Um, and that it's as objective as it can be, obviously. I think that this building has the, um, currently has some of the greatest access to the public, um, and a lot of the public groups, um, not just the town-sponsored group, well, the the town groups, but the other nonprofits also. And so I wanna be mindful and and continue that partnership, um, but just as a way to kind of, if there's a chatter out in in the world, we can point to a policy and says that this is how it is.
Yeah, cause the other thing is that our spaces are, have to be open to the public. So some organizations may not wanna use our space because they, you know, you wouldn't hold a birthday party because that's not really open to the public, so that wouldn't be an appropriate use of space in the library, but, so there's that consideration too, good.
Yeah, and just to add, and you know, you mentioned some things that haven't been discussed yet, I mean, I mean, I agree that this is gonna give us an opportunity to to make it clear and transparent what the, you know, use cases can be and like the parameters around use, um, and and these more nuanced things. Although, I will say that historically, it, there may be, there may have been some mystery around the r- r- request process. But the library is, as I've come to know, the staff and and the board members and and everyone else, like i- if anyone approached Carrie with a request, she was always willing to accommodate that, but the, I think part of the issue could just be our method and and updating now, like to the, you know, more modern ways of reserving rooms, where if you, if you go on the library website, there is a room request PDF. And back in the day, you'd print it out, fill it out, bring it to the front desk, or some people email it. But I think, you know, never, it's never been our intention to uh have any barriers for people to request s- space. And when there's uncertainty or it's just not transparent what the process is, um, mystery can uh bubble up a little bit and I get that, and just uncertainty around how this works. But I I see this as a a great opportunity because I, you you know, to uh modernize and streamline uh the the whole process. Although one question slash concern I have is that if we get this um re- request slash calendar system up and running, it seems to be working so far and and I understand it relatively well, but I'm concerned that if there are some residents or groups that wouldn't know how to use it, or there might be other barriers to using that for them, that we have a way for them to op- to, so we don't have uh uh inequities in terms of access. But that would be my, I I I'm very much for this system, but that would just be one question, especially with some patrons of the library and others, that that just came to mind that I wanted to.
Well, there are also seasonal activities that inquire, that require rather groups meeting. Maybe not so much this time of year, but more as the weather starts to get warm, cause of outside activities and so on and so forth, so. You know, these are all things that enter into the equation.
For sure.
Yeah, like, uh, for an example, like summer camp for the kids across across the way. I mean, they are always looking for space.
Yep.
How do they, they can go on here and sign up for that?
What happens in the summertime is we have events, different events, and we always welcome them. And I think Summer Fun for the last four years has actually included a library visit with the kids. So we do get piles of kids during the summer, during summer camp. They come in to borrow books or just use the library, and if we have a performer here doing something, we make sure we share that with Summer Fun so that they know, so that they can fill the room with kids too.
Yeah, I think I'm speaking less about the library and more about the space down here.
The, well, the spaces down here, they're, they're here, they're available if they had expressed any interest in it. But but again, we're in a fine line here, it costs money to go to Summer Fun. That's not open for all the stu- all the kids, it's only open for the people who pay.
Still a nonprofit.
I realize that, but nonetheless, it's still those kids who attend Summer Fun actually are paying to be part of that.
Yeah, cause.
This is where the, this is where the discussion goes on.
This is where we have some gray fuzzy areas.
But I don't understand why it's gray, it's a nonprofit run by the town.
Well, cause the the exact policy says you can't charge admission, so you could say like.
We're not charging admission.
Right, but kids are paying for, to be in that program. And plus you, you could also say maybe you don't want that stuff to be open to the public, which that's also one of the points.
When you.
But there's, there's the discussion that comes up in town a lot, it's not only with this space, with all spaces. That, you know, this is a Rutland building and a Rutland nonprofit program can't use the building. And there becomes the, that's, that's a lot of the problem, a lot of these programs. And I don't see any need for it, I don't. Hello?
Like, what's the matter with like where, like ju- just this like point, like what's the matter with where the, where the program is now? I I don't have kids, so I don't know how it works.
I'll tell you what's the matter, it's weather, it's weather dependent a lot, if it starts raining or thunder or lightning, they they don't have space for the kids, it's all outside.
Okay, but.
Well, they're with the school.
Yeah.
They can't always use the school.
Yeah, but see, wouldn't the school be the priority because it's school age kids?
I think that there's been in the past, and I don't know.
The school, yeah.
Go ahead.
No, no, no.
I was, go ahead.
Sorry. Go.
I was gonna say, I think in the past, they've had to end summer camp a couple weeks early because they have had to get out of the school and they have my understanding was there have been, they had tried to have conversations about could we use i- this space as a backup, obviously if the we- and I think that that's one of the challenges, is the weather piece. It's not a guarantee that they're going to need the space, but knowing that if the, if the room isn't, if the room or rooms aren't booked, can they book them as a contingency if the weather's bad, because then they could extend their camp and provide service to the, to the families that are that are utilizing it. Um, again, it's a, a a town cent- a town-centered town.
Yeah.
I'm just, and I think the other piece is, you know, that then also
Yeah.
I'm just, yeah.
The, and I think this is where the MGL piece comes in with the building, right? Is it's a town building, the taxpayers are paying for a lot of, of the upkeep and and management of the building. And then how it, how, how much access i- is that? And this is an ongoing conversation with the building on Glenwood as well and and the other building, it's not solely
Right. No, it's not just this building, it's all, it's all the town buildings, and people get frustrated.
to this, so.
Right. Yeah.
And I I think if the space is available and the programs are respecting the space in the building, I don't understand why these programs, it's not easier for them to utilize the space.
Well, how, I mean, what's the average size of the group, I mean?
I I I don't know.
I I mean, some of that.
That's the other thing.
That's an important consideration for.
Yeah, because we.
Oh, I know, but.
I I think that we could have a conversation about that.
But.
Yeah.
But that means another group, i- if we have, if we reserve the room for them, then another group's not gonna use it and they may or may not use it.
Right, and I'm not even saying necessarily reserve it so they know, I'm saying if if it's available. Ag- again, if the space is being used by somebody else, I don't think that one should kick another out, that's not what I'm saying.
No, no, we, I would, I agree with you.
Yeah, uh, but if the space, which, you know, if it's available at certain times, uh, you know.
Yeah, I think I'm just a little confused in this circumstance, like you have a known program with people are paying for these kids to go to this program and there is no weather contingency, I don't understand how that's possible.
Welcome to Rutland.
Yeah, that's what I mean, like, how is that possible?
Welcome to Rutland, there's no space.
How do you run this program without? But like, how do you do, like, how do you even have this program if you don't have a weather contingency?
So they do, have, they ha- they do, they've been using, utilizing the school, but what I'm saying is in the past, and I don't know about
Well, they do, yeah.
they've had to end the program a a week or two earlier than the the needs of the community because they haven't had that weather contingency, because the schools have needed access, they they redo the gymnasium floors or whatever.
Oh.
When possible, they try to utilize the basement of town hall, um, as in, and as an absolute weather contingency program. Because the majority, and that's the other piece, is all of their, their programming, outdoor programming is here at the center of town. And so it's not that we, there's no transportation, even if they could get over to Glenwood or the building on Glenwood or whatever. There's no, there's no transportation piece there for that. And so, it's some of that, that conversation and consideration, um, because it, we hear that it's a big burden on the families also to have summer camp end even earlier than what it needs, you know, what they need or um, you know, and I know that there's been conversation and I think part of it is staffing, but also on the half-days for extended care um, options for on the half-day of school and everything, there's, we don't have a location for that. I think the the flip side of that also is if there's staffing availability, because a lot of the the after-school staff is school staff as well. But again, some of those pieces is to to meet a community need as well as benefit everybody, kind of, but I, that's a piece that I think we're hoping to have a little bit of dialogue about also.
Makes sense. But also bring it up with school committee, they shouldn't be off the hook for this either.
Well.
In this particular circumstance, in my opinion.
Like what?
Well, let's talk about this building, though, we're talking about this building.
I'm just saying, school age kids, you do, get them to the.
Yeah, I I know, it's everybody else's fault, but I I'm just saying, I, I don't think it has to be as complicated as this always becomes.
Yeah. Yeah.
If the space is available, it's a nonprofit Rutland program, they should have access to the space, that's my opinion.
Um, I, one other piece I think has been for some, and and again, this is not, I don't know all the specifics, so it could just be the the outside rumor mill doesn't provide everything. Um, is if there's grant-funded opportunities that requires, because of space contingencies, obviously the rooms have space sizes, but obvi- also depending on what the programming is, right? You might not be able to run a programming, a program for ninety people, and it might need to be capped at thirty, let's say, or something. If it's grant-funded or a free program, I've hea- I've heard through the rumor mill that it hasn't always been accessible this, the space here hasn't always been accessible to them, e- even though it's been open. Um, like I said, this is a conversation also for the building on Glenwood and the other space in town, it's not solely this space, but this is one of the considerations, I think, from a poli- you know, a a building policy standpoint from the trustees, that there's that, that piece also, that perception, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, so then I would add to that about this scheduling, going back to the scheduling, it's like, I guess the consideration for that would be to make the scheduling be very agile. Because right now, it seems like it's very cumbersome across a lot of the departments or all of them. Um, so that would possibly accommodate the concern about if the room's available, use it, and then what you just said. You know, like having agile, like more agile scheduling, I think, across the board would maybe help.
I'm I'm just curious about the, when you say grant-funded, you mean like a program for children or adults or? And like, so when they apply for the grant, do they consider what space they're gonna use? And they asked us and we said, no, you can't use it?
For, for an example, my wife runs a before and after-school program in town, okay? She applies for grants all the time, gets approved for grants, but because they don't have a designated space for their programs, they can't take it. Tens of thousands of dollars out there, you know, perfect example, the playground in, on Memorial, that's not technically designated for before and after school, that's the town. There's there are grants out there to redo that entire playground, but because it's not specifically designated for before and after school, they can't, that's why they did the one over at, um.
Nakwag.
Nakwag, excuse me, they redid that whole playground, all on grant funds. The the money's there, but a lot of times when you're, when you're applying for it, there has to be specifics, they, they're not just gonna cut you a check, in other words, they're gonna say, well, what are we fixing? You know, if you fix up the back room for, or this room, or any room in here, if it's designated for certain usage, you may be able to get funding.
And only that use, or just?
No, 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 not necessarily, it just has to be a part of the use, you know what I'm saying? I mean, like anyone can use a playground in Nakwag.
Right.
It's not just before and after school. But the funding to fix, because it was designated before and after school for programs, they were able to get the grants to fix that playground. So, I think that's what you're talking, yeah.
Yeah, and I think there's been, I think, and I don't know specifics, again, it could be kind of rumor mill stuff, but there's been certain programs or funding for certain programs that thought maybe it could run somewhere else, and then that fell through and it was kind of scrambling, can we run it here? It's, it's funded, it's not a charge for anybody, but we have to cap the participation because of whatever it is. And I think that there's been some, some challenges there. Again, I don't have the specifics and I can try to ask and get more some, more s- specifics. Um, but that's just, and like I said, it's not only, we're looking at building use policies across town, and it's, the, the other buildings have other challenges or different challenges, or we, you know, we all have, um, and I Um, and I really wanna use this as a dialogue and just kind of what we hear as a board, um, and what the perception is, and as a way to maybe even, like I said, even as just clarifying in a policy that is e- except, you know, more routinely accessible through a scheduling or something. Um, I know I personally have had to schedule kind of last minute the library for different meetings, and everybody has been super helpful and accommodating and everything, so I appreciate that, and I don't want it to come across as that this is a contentious or or anything. Opportu- you know, dialogue, I I really want it to be productive and he, you know, have the dialogue.
Could you?
Yeah.
What's your policy right now in regards to scheduling, how much lead time do you need? Do you do emergency scheduling? Uh, what kind of nonprofits, if there are nonprofits, do you not take?
Well.
That kind of thing.
Interestingly enough, I've been looking through the policy and it says that we need at least forty eight hours, I sometimes get a call on a Tuesday morning, someone needs space Tuesday night. I cannot, I I mean, I, we have over, we host over five hundred meetings in this facility annually. That doesn't include this room, it includes only those two rooms. So I am constantly baffled when people tell me they can't get space here. Wednesdays for the last month and a half have been, well, maybe not December, but all the month of January and November prior. I I've been having sometimes four meetings and I juggle people around all over the place upstairs. So I'm at a loss for who struggles, I've been polling the people who use the space for the last month, six weeks, asking them if they find it to be difficult or challenging, even when they call me and ask me for dates. If they walk in the door with dates or a form already filled out. People are telling me they don't have any problem, if I'm not here, my staff is actually excellent and very well rehearsed in what to do. They pull out the calendar for people all the time. I'm somewhat confused about people's inability to not utilize the space. My own personal take.
And I think we take reservations up to sixty days in advance.
Up to sixty days in advance, yes.
I thought it was ninety.
Sixty.
Can we change it to ninety?
No, well, it's sixty because, and the library actually has the right to bump someone if we have a program, which we have never done, never.
Yeah, library program takes precedence over meeting rooms, which makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that's not a bad idea, because it's rare, or you know about it well in advance, like the Smithsonian situation.
Right. Right.
At the follow-up, are there any organizations, nonprofit now, that you have ever turned away?
I don't believe I have, no.
Okay. So if you got a request the day of and there was space available, you're saying you would fulfill that request?
I have.
Okay.
Many times.
I can attest that that Carrie and her staff have, absolutely. Um, and that's one of the things I I appreciate is, and I that's, I wanna be mindful of moving to the the online piece, is having that that personal piece as well, because Rich, to your point, not losing that accessibility piece, um, and the willingness to work also, I think that there is a bene- you know, a benefit there, but I think um, you know, and I don't know, I think right now, I think your policy is that the key is only picked up through the library, um, I'm not sure if.
It's on our website.
Right, right.
The form is on our website.
Right, but I'm not sure if there could be conversation to have a backup at dispatch, because like, one of
On the key.
The, for the key, be, one of my, one of my instances was, I was at work and it was bad weather, they were calling for a storm and I called like middle of the day. Library was open and everybody was great and gracious and allowed us to move inside, I wasn't sure I was going to be able to make it back in time to to coordinate getting the key from, um, from staff, and so
Mm-hmm.
just as a a as a way to to assist with that, and I I forget, I think I made it or the library was still open or somebody was around to help me, but just in in those instances, if.
In those instances, we usually make accommodations with someone, especially like you're coming from someplace else.
Yep.
You don't have time, we either hang around long enough to get in here, we 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 accommodate, I know we do.
As I've listened to, you know, the pieces you've all raised, uh, you know, from the select board and things that we've mentioned, I wonder if it would be constructive to lay out a few next steps, some concrete next steps, kinda, cause I'm trying to you know, put together what I've heard, um, and then, so first, maybe the next step could look like the best of two worlds. You can start to utilize the online scheduling system, have Carrie and other approved staff be the the ones to review the requests and approve them, but for accessibility sake, um, with regards to our own policy, which we still have to discuss and flesh out. But but once that's finalized and we're all on board on the same page with that, I'm envisioning, and and Austin, you might have other ideas too, you know, the policy could could kind of pop up or be really accessible whenever someone wants to request a library space. So they go to that page, the policy's either laid out like in bullet form or click this PDF to read the policy. So we're putting that front and center, so people are well aware what what the parameters are around use. Um, and then, as far as our our previous request system, which was that file, that PDF, which was not always, I mean, it's there, but people don't always find it. If eventually maybe the, like, we could maybe keep that as a backup or if people still wanna use that, but encourage people to start using the centralized uh, the town centralized sched- scheduling system. So some, something like that, with that, I mean, we could discuss a lot of the details more as a board, but I'm just thinking if that would make sense to move move things forward a little.
I think that would, that system would streamline a lot.
I think also allowing Carrie to have the ability to add a reservation.
Yeah.
Yes.
Like for people who can't do the online portion themselves, if they can hop in and she could do that for them.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, actually, or call or whatever, yeah.
Cause then it gets booked, yeah.
Yeah.
See, again, so I was just gonna add to your comment, um, but there is an option as like the admin in the system where you still can go in and do that, sometimes I do that, for like one of my boards or commissions. And the other thing we can do is on that page for the library reservation, we can have the clickable PDF form, we can actually um, turn it into a fillable PDF, so that people can either still email it to Carrie, or if like somebody doesn't prefer to do it on the internet, it can still be printed and filled out, so to Rich's point, you can have both options for people.
And I think just that, I I think we still have a lot of those systems that, I think, well, we're trying to transition a lot of things like payments and permits online, there's still a lot of people that, for whatever reason, um, you know, don't wanna use it. I I mean, I think there was like a Friday a couple of weeks ago, gentleman came to the annex, really needed to pay his excise tax bill. I'm like, you can pay that online, and he looked at me like, no way. Uh, so I did form, right?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Um, so I think we'll still, and that's customer service, right?
Absolutely.
That's huge, especially, I know that's important for the library, so I think we're always gonna have
Yeah.
that function available, I think just, you know, I think the core, and I think we all share this, is you know, trying to make it easier for the public and us to manage these spaces. Um, and obviously respecting the role of of the library, and certainly everything that you've mentioned, we can totally do, we have some of that already um, on the pilot, um, but obviously with some more information for the specific library information, we can put on there.
And I think, if I may, I think once, um, the, I think your policy was updated, it looks like in twenty twenty-two, but it's, I think it's only available on the library website through like a very small hyperlink under the meeting room.
Mm-hmm.
And so for the policy, building policy and everything, if we can also have that in our town policies, the the duplicity,
Yeah, yes.
because sometimes people are going to look on town, you know, there's some people that will default to the Rutland Public Library website,
Yes. Right.
and there's some people that are going to default to the Rutland Town website. And so, obviously, we wanna make sure that everything is updated across the board, um, with the same information, but if there's a way for those levels of duplicity, um, I think could could be helpful also. Because I think even one of our previous meetings, the policy that we had was an old policy that was adopted in May of two thousand one, and so I think that in our kind of town records, that's what we have, and it's not going through to the to the, um, you know, that, there's that level of disconnect on many areas, so if we can do that as well. Thank you. Is there anything kind of from you all for us? I appreciate the the conversation and I'm not trying, I didn't want it to be contentious, I wanted it to really have the opportunity for the feedback that I think we all have ha- have had, um, and also just where the discrepancies are, and I think some of it could even just be making the policy, the current policy more accessible. Um, and then, like I said, if we can transition to the, to a more cohesive reservation system, or at least calendar viewing system.
Oh, to that point about policies being more viewable, um, I think our group is looking at our policies in general on an upcoming meeting. Uh, it, um, it would make sense to sort of prioritize the meeting room policy for the purposes of this discussion, but I was wondering from your perspective, do you have any kind of, as you're gathering information from the rest of the town spaces, do you have kind of like a deadline that you would like to see things sort of collated, brought together by some point, a couple of months, I don't know.
I mean, so this board is, you know, this board, we're seated until the middle of May? Um, and kind of our priority, one of our priorities has been policy review, so obviously within the next kind of couple of months, obviously also knowing it's kind of the trustees' policy and that we don't have a whole, you know, this isn't one of the policies that we have a whole, whole lot of of control over, but just that, to your point, the the cohesiveness and acknowledgement. Also, just on your radar, you were here for the end of the conversation, we're considering an a special act for elected uh, individuals, because in the bylaws that were just passed, it was a way to remove appointed individuals from office, um, but there was, there's no provision for electeds, um, and so we're considering, um, a provision, it would be a special act provision for recalled electeds, that will be coming, a draft would be with conversation points, will be coming to your board as electeds also, because we're soliciting feedback from, we will be soliciting feedback from the other electeds, just as a conversation back to to you also.
I just wanted to clarify on that point of not necessarily, uh, I was just saying like, in reviewing our policies, did you have kind of a deadline of when you wanted everyone's policies sort of be like, you know, updated and done, whatever that may be, so you said kind of the next couple of months, which I think is, I think is doable. I was just thinking, you know, like, did you wanna have something done by X date? Have all the town's policy, meeting policies together by X date, would would, you know, that would be great if this is done by, if this project was done by like March thirty-first, that would be great, which means we would like all of our policies in from the various town departments, areas, whatever, by this date. That would be excellent if we had a sense of like, is there a deadline, if there is, what is it? Cause you know, these things could drag on forever if you want them to.
I I I can't speak on the rest of your policies, right, and I don't think that would be fair for me or this board to dictate a timeline for your other policies, but I I think, you know, whether it's an informal commitment, you know, over your next meeting or two, maybe for the meeting use policy to address it.
Yeah, mm-hmm, okay.
I'd be happy to attend and work with Carrie to to flesh out some of those details with you.
Yeah.
Um, but you know, I think for the rest of your policies, that I think that's totally on me.
Right, no, I'm just thinking just this one specifically, because it's in this larger conversation, that's all.
Yeah. Yep. Yep. Yep.
It may be, I think to some of Leah's point, the, a lot of the, um, mystery, if you will, like the word that you used was, um, people can't find all of these, they think of it as a town building, so their first instinct is to go to the town website. And I, and and I know this is an education point for me, being newer to town government, did not even know what the the Board of Trustees was, and the fact that, despite the fact that this is a town building, that there's a completely different set of rules and regulations that go with it, so I think it's an education piece for the public as well. So if there's, um, like Leah was saying, if we can get that that duplicity and having, keep everything where you would want to organized on your websites, but if we can also have information that's linked over on the town website, so people can easily find it there. Um, and policy is, the whole point of policy is that it's easily updated as necessary. Um, so for me, it's not so much, I mean, obviously, this one is is the big one that we've been talking about, the building use. Um, but if we can get those links up and more accessible to people, uh, more discoverable, that to me is the more more important piece, and then the updates will come as you're able to, you know, negotiate whatever changes that you're looking to do for those.
When this room was designed, I took a lot of time and a lot of thought and put it, put into this room along with the cable committee that was here at the time. And we did, we designed all this with the help of an architect, excuse me, with the help of an architect, and so, okay, all of this was put together. Now, we were probably better than halfway through construction when the first town administrator came on board with the town. And so when we got to the point of where the walls were up and then things were in place and so on and so forth, I invited her to come over and look at this. And she looked at it and she looked at me and she said, this is a jewel. She said, you've done one heck of a job with it, okay? So, you know, all right, so time has, time has evolved, things have moved on, and now this room is seeing much more use than was ever thought it would use, be used for, okay? Um, this desk and everything else was all part of, um, looking around different towns, seeing what they had set up and so on and so forth, all right? And so we put together something like this, came down with this idea, and this is where we are. So now, you know, it's come to a place where we are cramped for space and they want to use this room much more frequently, and so, you know, okay, this is subject that's going to be discussed by the cable committee in an upcoming meeting, and we will decide from there just what what path we wanna pursue. But at this point in time, you know, it is, it is a room that was designed for a purpose. It serves that purpose, it still serves that purpose, but it also serves another two hundred and seventy-six purposes, so, okay, so be it. So that's where we are with it, and you know, all of this space that's here, um, at this particular point in time, could probably be utilized a little bit differently, but there still needs to be a place for the board to meet. Because when this was coming down the road, the board was seating over in an area at a couple of tables like this and where, uh, town administrator's o- office is currently now, okay? And so, you know, when they found out that they were gonna move into this, they were like pretty much thunderstruck. And so I said, yeah, well, you know, this is something that, you know, we've designed for everybody, and so, you know, this is where the board can come and meet and close the door, have executive sessions and everything else, okay? So, you know, video was added and things have been, continued to be, uh, evolving here, and so where we are now is trying to come up with more space. And as you are well aware, it's a cramped situation.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned the town administrator said that, I was worried that you were gonna say they complicated the whole project. So that's a good result there.
So, thank you, and you know, if we can, I I don't know what your agenda for the next month is looking like, but if you can kind of touch on looking at, it looks like, like I said, your policy was updated in twenty twenty-two, so I don't know that it needs a whole, whole lot, I didn't go through it with a fine tooth comb, and obviously it's your eyes and not mine. Um, but just as an update to, back to us, you know, after your next meeting, kind of where it stands and everything, and then we can try to collate it and get it more accessible. And I think Austin will continue working with Carrie, um, through the reservation system and everything also.
When is your next meeting? Trustees meeting?
No, February.
February.
Oh, February. Say the eighteen. I got my.
Mid-February, I forget.
It's, um, it's usually the second Tuesday.
It's on Feb- it's February eighteenth, that's seven, that's a Tuesday.
Yeah.
Eighteenth. That's seven?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving back to, um, I think, hopefully, Old Business can be fairly quick, we have two outstanding items under Old Business. The Town Charter Committee, um, we had asked to hold this because there wasn't a full board. Last meeting, um, I believe there was interest from Harry through an email, through Last meeting, um, I believe there was interest from Harry through an email, through Jen, through, uh, the website application and myself through the website application. Um, I see in our packet that, um, Jen has, uh, withdrawn her application of interest after some further thought and careful consideration, um, time constraints. I had said at the meeting that I was interested but happy to step aside for someone else, um, that I was still interested. Um, so I believe that that would leave, um, and Harry, I believe you're still interested also, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and I don't know, I don't think that the, Harry, that your email or my letter or my application are included in this packet. They were in our last packets. Um, Harry, I don't know if you have your email handy. Um, I can search also just so that, since we have a full member board tonight to hear, um, everyone's interest. Um, Harry said, Leah, this is to inform the board that I'm requesting to be considered for the position of the select board appointment to the charter committee. I'm not filling in an application for the position as I see no need at this time. Also, it is stipulated in the charter that one member of the select board must be appointed to the charter committee with no mention of an application to do so. Also, the board did not have the opportunity to discuss this process. I understand that this is usual committee appointment protocol. I also believe that it does not apply in this situation. With that being said, if the board wishes to have the person chosen to present a bio of their history and accomplishments to the committee, I would be happy to do so if I am chosen. Regards, Harry. Um, I don't know that I have a copy of mine, um, oh god. I apologize, I didn't include it, cause at the last meeting you had withdrawn it. Um, and my apologies, I just forgot to include Harry's email when I put Jen's letter of withdrawal in there, so I apologize for that. And I had just said that I was in, that I was still interested, but that I was happy to also have conversation.
Sorry, I'm seeing my take.
Thank you, Austin. So, I, I think everybody can read, I'm happy to read also, um. So I guess for the public, I will say, I said that I would be willing to be considered for the select board rep for the charter committee. I've served on the Town Center Study Group, Master Plan Steering Committee, and Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee as a select board rep, as well as the municipal rep to the WRSD. I have truly valued the public input piece of this work, and I believe community engagement and input in this process is imperative. I have a broad understanding of the WRSD and a more limited understanding of Bay Path, but as a parent of a Bay Path student, I follow the happenings of this school too. Additionally, I attend the MMA annual meetings as well as other learning opportunities throughout the year sponsored by the MMA, CMRPC, and others which have provided opportunities to make connections with various leaders and residents outside of Rutland. I believe the development of a town charter is of great importance, and I also believe it must encompass as much of Rutland as possible. For me, true community engagement is priority. So we're, we are the holdup. We had asked last week meeting for planning board to make their appointment, um, so that the committee could start their meeting, as Austin mentioned in his update. Um, the meeting is scheduled with the rest of the committee and Colin Center for January thirtieth.
It's Thursday, yep.
At six P M. Um, and so that is, um, that, Jen, I'm sorry that I didn't realize that you had withdrawn, so.
Yeah, sorry, I just, I got to thinking about everything that I have on my plate and
Yeah.
with, also with my husband being on the committee. There were some considerations for making sure that kids' sports and other activities were taken care of. So, bit off a little bit more than I could chew for a third committee.
So, wait, planning board didn't appoint somebody?
Planning board did appoint, um, Tim Narold, right?
Okay.
So, um, and like I said, I think per hour, um, the charge that the board had adopted, it was a planning board representative and a select board representative. Um, were the only two board representatives, um, and planning board appointed at their, at joint meeting that we had on the sixth, I think.
Um, can I ask you, where you had withdrawn, why did you decide to put it back on?
So I think.
Cause there was two of us and now there's one, so I was trying to figure out why you did that.
So I think in my original conversation, and I didn't, I said that I was still int- I s- believe I said that I was happy to serve, but I was also happy to step aside and let someone else. And it wasn't like an official withdrawal or, or whatever, but also that was that. So I, again, I would still be, like I said, I'm happy to, to serve and I'm also, that's.
Okay. I'm, I'm just curious where, I don't know if I've ever seen a chair do this. Where there was a member of the committee who, board who wants to serve, and now they put their name back in again to have the discussion between the two of them, when there was a discussion between two. So that's why I'm asking you in front of the town,
Yeah.
why you didn't feel comfortable just having me be appointed to the committee? I don't know what it is, my age, whatever, I don't know. But that you kicked in and decided to put your name back in there again. So I'm curious, from a chair perspective, why you would do that?
I, uh, I, I was under the impression that since at our last meeting, we were a three-member board, and you raised a very good point about holding it until we were a full five-member board, that then it was an opportunity for all five members to hear the interest from all three of the original applicants. And that was what I did. I didn't see, I didn't even see in the packet until tonight that Jen had withdrawn. And she can speak to hers if she wants.
I don't need Jen's. Uh, but I'm curious with you.
And I'm saying that that was my conversation on the sixth. That, you know, I had said at the time that I was happy to be considered and also happy to.
But you withdrawn when it was Jen and me, now that it's me, you're stepping back in again. It's just curious to the town, why someone would do that, a chair particularly. I'm just saying in front of the town.
Is there a motion?
A motion for what?
There's a, we need to appoint a select board representative to the town charter committee.
May I ask a, a question? Um, as far as the select board involvement, we're, we're essentially nominating somebody that will represent this board on that committee. So I, I'm, would like to make sure that, do we have an understanding as to what this board would like to see as far as the charter? And, and I'm, I'm trying to ask a question as in like, a, a direction. Like, because speaking for me personally, I don't want to see our bylaws, this is how we do everything right now, picked up and plunked into a charter. I would like to have everything, especially with the Colin Center involved, I would like to see a lot of discussion, a lot of, hey, can we do this better, or can we make a change here to, like we've been talking about, do what we can to professionalize government or make things more efficient. I would, I, that's what I would like to see is somebody that will help with those conversations and those discussions to not just plunk up, this is what we do now, put it in a different format. I would like to see somebody encourage open discussion on change that will make things better in, not everywhere, but where appropriate.
So you're saying that either one of us should be able to do that?
Yes, that's, whoever it is, that's what I would.
And I, I would agree with you. Uh, I think it's very important, first off, I don't think anybody from our board should go there and hold authority over them.
Yes.
Okay, agreed? I don't think whoever goes there should be a chairperson, vice chair, or anything. We're not even there in an advisory capacity. We should be there in a capacity to answer questions. And help if they need guidance where that person can come back to the board and do it. So I don't see that as anything that needs real, um, structure from the board. So I agree with you on that. Okay? So that's why I questioned why the chair would want to do that, cause she has a responsibility for this board. It's not that she's going to extend that responsibility, somebody from the board should be assigned for that. Let her run the board.
I think for, for me, whomever the representative is, is kind of looking at where we are and kind of to, to reiterate what you said, Jen, kind of how we professionalize and continue to move town forward in a, in a forward momentum, knowing that we're a growing community and, um, looking at kind of best practices across, across the state, and then what, what, how that fits with Rutland. Obviously, that's going, I think we are going to look towards, the, the charter committee would look towards the Colin Center for some of that feedback, but also I think kind of hearing from the community as far as what, what's important to them and the level of, um, of community involvement. Like I said, in all of my, um, work has been, um, really important. And I don't see it as so much, uh, I one hundred percent agree with you, Harry, that whomever it is is not in any sor- sort of, um, uh, leadership role or, um, officer role on the committee. Um, and that it, that it's taking some of what this board is viewing as priority and importance. And also looking at, again, I hate, I, I keep saying the kind of the best practices, but, but relying on some of, some of that also. Um, not that this is how we, we've always done it, but this is what we, we did, and this is where there's opportunity for growth. And this is kind of, um, how, you know, the community statewide as well as Massachusetts has evolved, or as well as Rutland has evolved.
Are you saying that we're all capable of that?
I think that that's important from whomever is doing it, that's.
That's what I'm saying, so, you know, to take yourself as a chair and to put yourself in a committee when you have people on this board who are willing to do that, to me does not send a good message to the town, cause you're not pulling in the people on the board who want to also go forward.
I, I, if I may, just a few comments to add. Um, Harry, what happens if you become chair in May? Of the board, of the select board, and you're the member of the town charter committee?
Then I'll abide by what is.
Would you step down?
I would.
So, I, I guess, uh, uh, to me, they're, they're two different responsibilities, right? I think representing the select board and the town charter committee, in my opinion, shouldn't conflict with the business of the board. So I think the chairmanship issue, I, I'm not sure how relevant it is, but I just want to clarify that the select board member is a voting member of the committee and has an equal voice of the, can't remember how many members there are at this point.
Nine.
Nine, or seven, whatever, twenty-five. Um, and the chair will be elected, I, I, I don't think the board should speak on behalf of the members. The chair will be elected by the members of that committee and vice chair. So, um, if the committee feels that Harry or, or Leah or anyone else is, is the best person to serve as the chair, I don't think this board should dictate the work, um, and that election, um, that's gonna happen next week. So, um, I, you know, I, I think we should really steer this discussion towards why the two members feel that they would be, um, and why they're most interested to serve on this committee. I think we're talking a lot about personal issues that maybe we have with this, when really we could have a much more productive discussion about why you each feel that you would be, um, most excited and may best represent this position. And respectfully, the board can do whatever you want for the discussion purposes, but I'm not sure how helpful this is to.
To be honest with you, I wish the bylaw didn't call for a select board to sit on it.
Well, with all due respect, you, you were one of the members that approved that.
No, no, I'm saying that, but in hindsight, looking back now,
Yeah.
for the, what's happening on the board right now, I would have not, if I knew that then, I would not have had select board sit on it. Too contentious, in my opinion.
Yeah, I, I think you had a good discussion last week between the three members, but it was awkward because all three members were interested. So, I think that's why you wanted to have this discussion this week, obviously not knowing that Jen.
Yeah, I didn't want, without other members being here, to me, that was wrong.
So.
It was wrong.
So, assuming all three members were still in, I would hope, and I would assume that you'd be having that discussion about why each of you feel and can convince the majority of the board, why you feel you'd be the best to represent.
My only concern is, she was one of the three, and she stepped down.
Not officially.
I'd have to see the video. You say, I'd like to see the video officially say she didn't want.
I, well, I think the only official resonate or withdrawal that we got was from Jen, and that was official communication to Tamika.
Wordwise, so, but we'll take Jen's word for it, okay?
I don't know if there was any action that came from that meeting, right? It was, this is weird, we should talk about this next meeting.
We agreed to postpone.
Right, there's no motion, there was nothing, it was just, we're gonna talk about this next week. But, again, I don't know how productive this is, again, whatever you guys want to do, if we want to go for another hour on this?
Uh, no. No.
To me, if you're going to be seated on the committee and be a member of the board, to me, you're gonna go sit on the committee and just be a member of the committee. I don't see what being a member of the board.
Well, we, we have select board members that are chair of current committees.
Right.
Right.
Harry, you're one of them.
Right.
Um, so if we have an issue with a select board member being a chair of another committee appointed by the board, then we should address that across all boards. So, I, I, I think we need to have some equities about how we treat appointed boards, right? Um, so again, I, I, I don't know how relevant of an issue that would be for someone to serve as a chair.
I can't completely agree with it, but I understand what you're saying. I just also feel that, you know, all right, you are a member of the, of the, of the committee. That's, you know, the charity committee, you are there as a member, not as a select, select board member or anything else. I mean, that's just my feeling about the whole thing, but.
I think that that's, I mean, if I may, I think, Paul, that that's true. I also think that the point of having a planning board member and a select board member on, was to bring kind of that perspective of those, those very important elected boards to, to a part of the development of a charter that speaks a lot to the functions and roles of those two very important elected boards.
Sort of acts as a liaison, right? And from my understanding, you know, maybe boards in the past had informal liaisons of board members, you know, hey, Tom, you're gonna attend Concom, all these, you know, these other board meetings.
So let me ask you.
So the idea is, you know, kind of, you also, especially for maybe important things that happened during the process, I would, you know, I think a good member would also report back to the board and say the town charter committee, especially during your board updates, town charter committee met, discussed this, you know, what do you guys think, so I can bring that back to provide feedback to the rest of the tar- town charter.
That should be a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Yeah, that should be a no-brainer.
So, and, you know, so having a, a, a representation of a board, I think the original draft that I had, had a regional school committee member, right, you guys didn't like that, so we took that out. Um, so, but I think also giving respect, I think to the point that, that Leah had made, these are kind of the top two elected boards in town. Um, and I think that does deserve to have the respect for representation on one of the most important documents that the town hopefully will adopt within the next year and a half or two years, so. Um, and that's, I think, why you guys approved that as part of the charge.
I, I, I mean, I think Leah is right, in terms of, no matter who gets appointed, we are there to move the town forward. And sometimes it gives a feeling that there are members of the board who don't think I'm capable of doing that. And that would concern me as an elected official, elected by the town. But I don't want this to go on anymore. I think we should make a decision and move on, whatever it is.
I can, I mean, I will entertain a motion, I also can speak to, for me, I think the town charter has been a top priority for me since I was elected on the board, um, in conversations with all the previous current and interim town administrators. It's one of the, the top priorities that in looking for professional staff, um, they look towards. And so I'm, I'm super excited that this, that this process is moving forward regardless. Um, I think, I, and I kind of alluded to it last. Um, I think, I and I kind of alluded to it last meeting, that we don't have a regional school district. We intentionally didn't include them because that's a big whole separate piece and in in conversations with that. But also kind of being mindful that we are within two regional school districts is um. Is a, to me, a a an important piece that shouldn't be lost when that's. A large chunk of our of our monetary budget as well as um. The, our community.
I've said my piece in front of the town, I've expressed my views, so I'm done.
Is there a motion? So. We will move forward without a select board representation, um, it sounds like. Um, and it will be a eight-member committee, I assume. Um, without select board representation, is how it sounds.
I I think that would. Not reflect very well on this board. Harry, I don't, I don't have any concerns with your ability to be the representative on the board. I I guess from from my part, I just, it's. It's frustrating for me to have that question brought up. When I I don't think that there's been any conversation around that, um.
So you're saying if I become chair next year, I wouldn't be able to sit on it anyways?
No, I think that's the exact opposite of what we're saying.
Oh, so.
Well, Harry, yeah, to be fair, that's the concern that you raised about if Leah were the member, so I think to be fair.
No, 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 I'm just saying that if I become chair and that board votes, then I can replace Leah on that committee. Even though I'm the chair. That's my point of looking at the chairs.
Well, no, I I I think you're suggesting that you'd be appointing the position and not the individual.
Right.
Right.
Which is.
So.
I mean, I think the motion would be that, right, appointing the chair, not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, but if I am the chair and the motion's made to appoint me to the committee, then I would be appointed to the committee.
If the motion was made to appoint the chair of the select board?
No, to appoint me, even though I'm the chair, to appoint me, we're appointing Leah, even though she's the chair, so to speak.
Right, but I don't think the appointment is because she's the chair.
That's not my point either, my point is, she sits in a position of of managing this board and controlling this board. It should be an individual who's not in that responsibility to sit on that committee, that's my point.
Yeah, well, no, and and that may be a fair, but again, you should be consistent with your other boards.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
So.
No, no, this is, I'm sitting on that not as a chair.
And but what if you become chair?
And I, then I can't sit on that committee unless you're voting me in, because Leah gets voted in.
That's an informal practice that I think you've just created, Harry.
We're not.
Well, Harry, no, I I this, we need some consistency here, because I I.
What's the inconsistency?
I very much feel, if I may, I very much.
Harry, I I'll tell you the inconsistency, I think, I I think that. There's been questions that came up at the special town meeting about board members serving on CIPC, obviously, I think you did a great job. Uh, advocating against that. But we can't have inconsistency of applications of rules, so. Um, if one person can be chair and be on another committee, um, I E U, or. Actually, we have two members, Paul, I think is chair of the cable advisory committee. Um, Jen, I don't know if you've served in office capacity on historical commission, you still serve as an officer, right? We should be consistent across everyone who serves on this board and any board and commission. So whether they serve as chair, vice chair, clerk, whatever, of this board or other boards, we should be consistent. And it shouldn't change because of whoever the individual is, or, to be honest, it shouldn't change as each board, right? And I think that's something that this charter discussion is very timely, bylaws are very timely.
Yes.
The select board handbook, uh, that I think the board wants to work on is important, because we need some consistency as. You change with board members, you change with staff, you change with other board and commission, commission members appointed by this board. And I don't feel, especially from a staff perspective, I've been here two years, and I feel like there's been. Twenty-five different rules depending on what the topic is, who I'm talking to, what the staff member is, what board. We're dealing with, which. For me personally, creates chaos, and I can only imagine what the public is seeing, especially in a discussion like this tonight, so. All I ask is, whatever the board decides, be consistent, because it makes our jobs hard when people say. What the heck just happened at the select board meeting, what does this mean, and we can't, we can't really fully describe that, so you know what we say? Talk to Harry, talk to Leah, I can't speak for them. Um, me personally, it's my job to speak on your behalf, and this discussion makes it very hard to do that, so that's all I'm asking.
All right, I make a motion to move to appoint Leah Whitman as a select board representative to the town charter committee.
Give a motion, is there a second? I'll second. Second conversation. We'll call Harry.
Chapinay.
That's enough.
Is our discussion point over?
Yeah. By your eye.
Yeah, my. Two, two?
So I was.
She can vote herself.
I was like, I was.
Or she she can vote Yerney.
Okay.
Whitman. I.
I'm missing something here, is the person from the select board going to be the chairman of the? The committee?
No.
No.
Well, okay, well, if the committee may decide that, right, but.
Wow.
I don't know why anyone would want to chair multiple committees, but that's up to the committee to decide that, just with all due respect to the committee.
Because I gave you some thought, but I spend too much time playing full house piece four of a kind now, so this, so.
All right, let's move on.
Next up, we have the town welcome sign policy, um, the hope was to finalize and adopt at the EDC meeting last week. Um, there's communication from their clerk, um, they had a a lively discussion about it, they had a lot of concerns about the existing policies. Um, that they saw some kind of areas that needed fleshed out, they had asked that they could. Take ownership of the policy as well as the signs, revamp the policy, bring it back to us, I think, as the policy holders, that then we would. Um, uh. Adopt the policy, um, but kind of let them flesh through it a little bit more from their economic development perspective. Um, and they wanted to also take control of managing the signs, um, and that, they had some. Different ideas as far as what to do, um, for the dollar amount funding wise, um, for the sponsorships, the timing of the sponsorships. As well as what to do with the funds. Um, so, I think we had the conversation before, we spent a decent amount of time on the the. Policy and then had asked that they, um, that it go to EDC as they had a little bit more expertise. And now they are asking if they can kind of spend some more time and really kind of revamp it and work on it. Themselves. Um, I personally am okay with that, I think we have an economic development committee for a reason, and this provides them an opportunity to. To do that work, um, obviously, as the the ultimate policy holders. Um, we would still have kind of final approval, select board would still have final approval of it. Does the board have any?
How difficult is it for us to do this? If we stay, if the select board approves this and not go to EDC, how difficult is it for us to do this? Is it a lot of work that we can turn over, or there's nothing?
We did it in the past, I I think it's just, I think to to Leah's point, um. You know, the board has established an economic development committee, this is some sort of an economic development initiative, so. You know, I I'm of the opinion that maybe this is a good project for the EDC to work on. It may be managed, but obviously, policies and everything flow through this board, so. Whatever changes they have, I think, obviously, they need to report back to you, but if you want to have them manage it, they do have a staff liaison, our town planner. Um, that can assist with this as well.
I mean, who who establishes the fees for this?
You guys would.
The board, you establish the fees.
Yep.
And everything gets run through the town anyways, right?
You would have to state that in the policy.
That's the policy, okay. So I'm confused, when I look at the EDC charge, when I look at what their charge is. I see three out of the five that they seem to be doing. And this is one of the three, if we add it to it. But I'm still waiting to see the other two in terms of economic development. I don't see giving them this. It increases the economic development piece of. The EDC.
It's an economic development initiative, right?
If they were doing all five pieces, I'd say, fine, if they want to take this on besides that, but. I think that this should stay with the select board. The EDC hasn't been, well. I think this should stay with the select board the way it is, we've worked hard on it, we've created all this stuff. And if all they want to do is work on this, then we gotta figure out, well, how do they, how do they collect, how do we collect the money if they're overseeing this?
So, so my recommendation, um, and. Very similar to how we have other border commissi- border commissions that, for example, the events committee takes in money. Um, they have an active relationship, for example, with Tamika, in this case, EDC has a staff liaison, so I would suggest that they use their staff liaison to complete this work, so. Um, if payment is collected, I think it should be, uh, the direction and probably included in this policy to submit payment to. The, um, planning and community development office for processing.
And, if I may, at EDC, they were talking about explicitly saying how the monies would be used. Um, they had concerns, I believe, here, and I don't remember off the top of my head. Um, we had said that it would be, um, the fee, a portion of the fee would be used to purchase the sponsorship signs, and then the remaining balance would be deposited into a perpetual care fund. Um, which town would utilize for necessary repairs and maintenance of the surround, the sign, maintenance on the signs and surrounding area. And they had questions, they were thinking of trying to establish a a perpetual care fund or something to. Um, not so much care of the surrounding area of the sign, but, um, to, a- as an avenue to potentially provide, um, small business. Uh, fun, grant funding or something, a s- like a small, that there would be an application and everything. Um, whether it's to assist in getting us a a new business in town to provide some economic, um, like. Advertising economic piece, it wouldn't obviously be a large amount, but they wanted to be very clear as to how the funds would be. Um, expended, and from the business owners in that group, they felt that that was much more attractive, and then they had suggested potentially. Reaching out to other land, local landscaping businesses or something to see if they wanted to almost do and adopt a sign area as far as beautification or something. Um, to provide additional av- um, advertising avenues for for our local businesses.
I guess I misread what the EDC's charge was. I guess I feel like what I'm seeing here is, oh, we're gonna be nice, we're not gonna really go out and pull business in. We're not gonna really go out and develop business and bring in some nice. People that want to buy land or work. But we're gonna worry about signs, and that troubles me, that just makes me feel they're on the wrong track.
Well, Harry, I I respectfully, I disagree, one of the most important, one of the most important components of economic development is is promoting the town. Um, public relations is incredibly important, um. Economic Development Committee right now is working on an economic development brochure, um, that's PR, right? Um, this is another economic development initiative, any town, you know, Hubbardston is a good example, right, they've got. Welcome to Hubbardston that are sponsored by businesses that have the business logo, I think multiple businesses, Winchunin has the same thing, Gardner has the same thing, so. Um, you know, I think there's a reason why you have committees, as you know, as a committee member. A lot of the work is done in committees and reporting back to your reporting authority, the select board, so. As an economic development initiative, I don't feel that this is an unfair request to have them, you know. Manage some of the program on behalf of the board, but ultimately, everything comes back through the board, so. And, you know, some of the ideas I think that were mentioned, we'll have to check on the legality on some of those, um.
Like what?
Like, uh, small business assistance programs, I don't know particularly if we'd be able to take. General fund money for revolving fund that is used for something other than that purpose, we'd have to look into that a little bit more.
Well, now it's.
If we if we keep this money in the general fund, I might think twice about it, but if we set up a revolving fund, definitely not, we got too many of those now. We need to be careful with our money, we got a big budget problem coming up, and we just can't start sending out revolving fund money.
The only thing I think that is, you know, not a bad idea, and I think that, I can't remember the language of this most recently, but. Very similar to how some communities have, um, you know, perpetual care cemetery trust funds, for example, that. Uh, you know, a portion of that stays in for the purpose of either expending for. General fund purposes, but also a portion of that is for just the overall upkeep and maintenance of it, um, which. I think would just sustain the, um, ability for this program to continue over the years. The, I could tell you the, um, I think the previous program, there was maybe one of the signs was damaged or stolen, and the town. Through the general fund money had to absorb the cost, right, so. I think whereas if you guys had set up some sort of a funding source to to steer that, so for the maintenance, sponsorship money alone could replace.
I mean, I thought that's what we were doing here.
Yeah, but I think you just objected to that, right, so.
What?
I think you just objected to it going into a revolving.
A revolving fund, but we have it set up here as part of. Taking care of this stuff, so why do we have to complicate it into a revolving, I I look at it as, why?
Well, revolving funds have to have very explicit purposes, right, we couldn't just have an open-ended. Uh, you know, to be decided with the board or or economic development committee wants to spend it on.
But you know, the problem with revolving funds, they grow. We start out with five, then we go to seven, then we go to ten, and I don't know if this town can afford to keep doing that. When we're facing such a problem that we are right now. I think we pass this, and if later on we decide we want to give this to the EDC, then we'll give it to them. I just don't think this is the appropriate time to be making that kind of a decision.
So.
We got a lot on our plates, and I think this is not there, but that's my opinion.
So I think one of the considerations is if money just comes into the general fund, then it cannot be. Earmarked for repairs to a sign or anything, it needs to be an established in some sort of fund, and. I think the, originally, it was proposed as a perpetual care fund, as Austin mentioned. Um, to ensure that its money isn't coming out of the general fund to for upkeep, we know at some point the signs are gonna need repaired, they're, I believe. Five years old now, um, and so it's some, you know, they're just going to need some general maintenance, whether it's new paint or new gold leafing or whatever. Um, so that was the intent of this, I bel- economic development had a number of comments about the entire thing, they didn't provide us with those. Because they were really hoping that as economic development and utilizing this as a tool for businesses to be able to. Have an advertising leverage in town as well as, um, you know, a a. A hey, we're in town and we're welcoming you into town piece, that they could, um, work on this, um, themselves. That was their, um, conversation and, um, they've been doing a a lot of different, um, initiatives. And as you know, Rutland is, um, not always the. The easiest community to welcome businesses in, and so trying to provide an avenue that isn't. Um, a burden to the small businesses that we have in town, but can provide them something, um, to get their name out a little bit more is. Kind of their, I think, I thought it was this board's desire as well as kind of their their want also.
Yeah, I I think it's a good idea for for repairing this, but Harry, I just want to say the flip side of what you said, and I understand it. If revolving funds for the programs, I don't know how many we have, I know of two.
What, six, seven?
Yeah, we got a decent amount.
We got a decent amount.
They're self-funded programs, we would not have a rec department at all if the town was in charge of of taking care of it, I I'm a firm believer in that. It is a self-funded program, every dime they make goes back into Rutland, running Rutland's programs.
That might be true. That might be true, but.
But it is true.
That's a good-run program, but a lot of our other ones aren't. And until we get those squared away, I don't wanna start another revolving fund. Cause we don't even know what's going on inside those revolving funds. I get no report on our monthly statement, I never get to see anything. And our job is to financial, financial people oversee and that's town. And if I can't have access to that, I don't wanna start another one.
They must have to answer to you, right? I mean, they have to.
Yeah, so I mean, to be honest, most of our revolving funds don't have a lot of activity, to be honest. I think the most active are the rec ones. Um, we have a planning board revolving fund, we have a couple revolving funds for, for example, the animal control officer, which has maybe less than five thousand dollars. I think police department have one. A lot of them are active. We've got a, um, actually, Wetlands Protection is not even an active one, right? That's not even a revolving fund. Border Health has a revolving fund, which is explicit, explicitly used for paying Rich Stevens for his services and paying a portion of Lynn Miller's salary. Tax title revolving fund, um, which again is just used explicitly for tax title purposes. So I, I don't think it's fair to say that they're not managed.
I'm saying I don't have access to see what's happening.
So, and you and I had an offline discussion that.
Yes, and we're hoping to solve that problem.
Yep, and I think it's my responsibility as, uh, and working with the finance team to develop a quarterly report. I think that's good feedback, um, that there is not, um, a part of our reports that have, um, revolving funds on them, revenue and expenses. So it's our intent to to prepare that. We just finished our December revenue, um, so you'll have revolving funds on that. But, but, uh, but I don't think we're we're gonna report monthly on revolving fund activities. Also, just.
Quarterly?
Quarterly, as a part of the quarterly reports.
Alright.
And if I may, at town meeting, we vote the spending.
Yep, just spending cap, that's it.
Spending cap for each revolving fund, um, so.
And to be honest, you, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, Rutland gets a little bit, Rutland gets some more transparent in terms of how they prepare their budgets for revolving funds than anything I've seen in some other communities. So, so for example, the rec programs actually develop a budget. The only thing that's required is a spending cap, that's it. So I I think Rutland's done a pretty good job of treating them as if they're departments. You know, with wages, purchase services, there's a lot of detail that's presented in the bu- during the budget process. And then if there's changes, for example, the rec revolving fund, there was a change, they had to spend a little bit more money to buy a pool pump. It comes back to this board to raise that. So, you know, all revolving funds actually are under the, the, uh, control to increase by the select board. And the only time that you actually have to go back, uh, to change that spending cap, the only time you have to go to town meeting is when you wanna change the spending cap, so. But again, Harry, you and I had a discussion offline about reporting of that. I think that's something that's never been done before here, reporting revolving funds and some other special revenue funds, uh, that we have. So I think that's something that we'd like to, and I I agree with you that that's a good mechanism to report back, not just to you, but to the fin- finance committee.
Well, my concern is some revolving funds never go down, they keep going up, okay? And there's no track record, in my opinion, from E D C bringing in new business cause they've been around now for what, two years, more? Bringing, yes, they have business here, we're proposing, but they haven't done anything bringing in new business. So now they wanna take over the signs, they wanna set a revolving account. They want to decide what the signs are gonna be and then we're gonna approve it in terms of fees and everything. And all they're doing is just doing things that we're doing now anyways, and we spent a lot of work doing this. So I'm just, I'm very, very concerned. And I'll say that to the town, that I am one that is very concerned about this, turning it over to the E D C.
I think, like I said, the, the conversation at E D C the other night, and I don't think they, they haven't approved their minutes yet, so. But was that they had some, whether they took ownership of the policy or not, which, um, was their hope, as far as kind of re, I don't wanna say redoing it, but they had some questions about some of it. They had some questions, um, from a business perspective, um, as small business owners, for the cost as well as the length of time, um, and how some of that was managed. The conversation as far as what those funds are used for was not by any means set in stone that it was going to be a revolving fund or anything, they were throwing around some other ideas. Some of the, um, through CARES money and especially ARPA money, a lot of the, some, many communities had established small business grant funding opportunities, setting aside allocating, um, some of that money for kind of small business grants. And that was one of the ideas that that, that their group had as a way to kind of try to help some, some of the small businesses in town. Again, it's not set in stone and anything that they would propose would come back to this board. We can, we, I I would, we could happily say, sure, take it, but we're not, this board is not amenable to another revolving fund. And whether that, you know, needs to be worked with Austin, you know, any of the conversation I think needs to be clarified through a, a fiscal management and best practices coordination if there's money coming in. And Harry, to your point, I don't disagree that giving a, another board or committee, another pot of money is, is in the best interest of.
Of the town at this point.
Um, but, but I also caution a little bit that if it goes solely, when we're doing something such as this for signs and it goes solely back into the revolving fund, or not the, sorry, I misspoke, the general fund, there is absolutely no accountability that that money is actually going to be spent for a sign that needs to be repaired or upkeep of a sign or anything.
So what do we do now?
That's, I mean.
That's what we're doing now, isn't it?
So you've been doing for, you've been working on this for a while now.
Yeah, so, and we fix signs, haven't we?
If I may.
Or they're all dilapidated out there.
At the town's expense, right?
At the town's expense. But at least we control it. The town gets to vote on how they spend the money, not another organization that we're giving a pot of money to, regardless of how much it is. And we don't know, nobody's even here from the E D C.
You guys still sign this. So you guys still sign this, so any expenditure, um, through revolving funds still has to be approved by you. And that's your authority, that you guys.
So if we don't approve the revolving fund expenditure, then what?
Then we wouldn't.
Then we wouldn't pay it.
We wouldn't pay it, yeah.
Okay. Oh, God.
If I may, I.
I'm still worried about our finances and anything that interrupts that, I'm just, I've, I I'm fighting for the town to make sure that we do right by them. And I have a hard time giving money away right now to anybody else. I'm just so, I am just so concerned about how the people are gonna react, so.
So is it friendly compromise to not, uh, agree to the revolving fund, but they can still manage the?
My feeling is, if they wanna manage that, we've set the prices, they come to us, if there's a sign, we get the money. If there's an expense, we pay it. I have no problem with that, if they wanna do that. I have a problem with them talking about setting fees and talking about a revolving fund. Everything else, if they wanna spend money on, should come to the board. I sit on a C I P C, you know, anybody that comes to me and wants money, I gotta recommend it to the board. Why are they so different? That's the way committees are supposed to work, not just, oh, here's twenty. Now, there are certain situations where that's kinda needed, recreation is one. But all these other ones, maybe the planning board, and even that, I have issues with that, collecting the money, okay? So, yeah, I'm just not, this is not a good thing for the town right now.
I, I would like to see E D C's proposed changes. There, as you said, this seems to fall in line with their charge. I would like to see what they feel would better make this for, from an economic development perspective. I'm also in favor of doing something with any of the fees that we get for this, maybe not all of it, but some of it, to put in, whether, I don't know if there's options other than a revolving fund, a designated fund for maintenance of the signs and the sites, because if we're not doing that, it's just going into the general fund. I'm sorry, they're never gonna get taken care of. It it's, it's just not gonna happen in this town. So we, we need to find ways, if we're going to do that, we need to be earmarking. It's no different than any of our town buildings. We have no money that we're putting into the maintenance, regular maintenance of our town buildings. We need to have funds set aside at some point, we should be doing that, so that we have money when things go wrong and we, we don't have to go into the general fund for significant expenses. I don't, this is much, on a much smaller scale, but I don't see any reason why we can't have, if possible, designated funds to maintain the signs, otherwise, why are they there?
Right, why are they paid for?
Why are we, why are they being paid for if we're not gonna maintain the signs and they're not gonna be nice? Nobody's gonna want to advertise them if they're all dilapidated, broken. It what, and what happens if they get stolen and we're not willing to replace it? Now we have to refund, potentially refund money because there is no advertising at that point. So regardless of what the funding mechanism is, I think there needs to be some of that and that should come from the fees that are there. And I think that's, you know, what are the other, the other rest of it is, is done? Does it half go into the general fund for whatever purposes to the town? You know, that's still open for discussion, but for me, bottom line, I, I, I would certainly welcome E D C's recommendations for what they would like to see for this.
Um, if I may, just, um, a cou- a couple points of feedback from a staff perspective. I always, I, I'm very much in support of having some sort of staff support, in this case through the planning board liaison, because as you know, there's frequent turnover of boards and committees or sometimes they just stop meeting on a regular schedule. And where there's potentially monies involved and there's, there's businesses involved, I would just wanna make sure that there's some sort of staff involvement to make sure that we don't end up in a situation where we are now, where we're trying to kinda start from scratch again. Um, and then the other thing for the board's consideration is, would you be open to having the existing sponsorship signs taken down? I'd say probably fifty percent of them are, are businesses that are no longer in business. And then perhaps others are maybe getting a, a additional advertisement time when we're trying to start fresh and we're already a year past when these signs have, we're supposed to have ended their five-year period. So just a couple of thoughts from our perspective.
I'd be willing to hear from E D C on that issue, yeah.
So is the board amenable to having E D C work on the policy and provide their kind of, their proposed policy to us for consideration? Not a revolving fund specifically, but whether it can be a perpetual care fund or something to ensure that there's some monies allocated for, um, upkeep and maintenance of the, the signs?
The good thing about a trust fund is the interest goes back to the general fund.
Yeah.
Which is good.
And I do think that.
It's not much, it's like a, a couple of pennies.
But I do think that they are trying to brainstorm ways to, to not only bring in additional businesses, but also work with the businesses that are here. Um, and especially, we know that, you know, the Puma Guts at road closures have had an impact, had a huge impact on some of the local businesses. You know, the, the stuff going on over at Four Corners has had some impact on local businesses. So just trying to be, they're trying to be, um, creative in ways that they can support existing businesses as well.
And again, I'm not against E D C, whatever they do, they, they have a job to do, you know, they're, they're a commission cell. But I just wanna make sure that it's, makes sense, what they're asking for and what they do, that it makes sense monetarily. It makes sense adaptively, that they can do the job.
Um.
So you need a, uh, emotion on that?
I, do, does the board want a motion to send it back to E D C for consideration? With the understanding that it comes back, the final, their final comes back to us and no, um, revolving fund? Or is that communication just informally, is the board comfortable with that communication?
I don't know what you say, just informally?
I wrote down everything you said, if you're comfortable with informal. My only question is, do you have any sort of timeframe on this? Hopefully you would like to hear back.
I, I think that they were trying, they were aiming for kind of, uh, I believe, beginning of the fiscal year and because I had said that we were hoping to kind of have everything in place. I thought by, you know, now slash April, between now and April.
Right, yeah, we were hoping to start it now.
Um, and so they're aware of kind of that want and timeline. They had some other considerations as far, I think this board had some questions as far as the length of time if, if a business left town or, or went out of business, um, while they still had to sign up and how to manage that. They had some of those other nitty-gritty pieces that we.
I think we had that in there.
Um, right, but I think that they had some, some other considerations.
How many, how many signs do not have current businesses in town? They're listed, but they're not here, other than.
Probably half of them.
Really?
And there are some that have multiple of the same business.
But we did collect the money on them.
Yes, more, yeah, but it's, it's where you're past the five-year mark that that term was for. So that's the only reason that I, that I brought it up. It's just to, if we do it to maybe just give a fresh start.
Yeah.
And I personally am okay with either keeping up existing businesses and taking down nonexistent or just keeping up everything for right now because it's still a work in progress, um, personally. But I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
So we have to do, really, is take the business name off the post?
Correct.
And who do we have do that?
D P W, most likely.
D P W?
Yeah.
The post may need repair though, what's it been, five years? And nobody's touched it.
I'm sure the signs, the signs are wood.
They've been stained, nothing, yeah.
Yeah, the signs are wood, I'm sure.
So that was just a little bit of my consideration for keeping them.
Probably, I bet you there's rotting.
That was a little bit of my consideration for keeping them up for right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
Okay.
Um, we have one more thing, uh, the fiscal year twenty-six budget discussion. We had at our meeting, our joint meeting with FinCom on Thursday night, we had a, uh, more in-depth conversation, I think, than we were anticipating, um, given that it was only a three-member select board. But also FinCom had a lot of, um, dialogue back and forth as well. Austin, I think is really looking for direction from the board, knowing the fiscal projections, um, that we have. Austin, do you want to speak to it? I think Austin is asking, and kind of the consensus at FinCom, the joint FinCom select board meeting the other night, is to look towards, uh, an override, um, what that looks like, how much, the length of time was still up for consideration. Um, the, uh, the question, I believe, is, um, an look to raise revenue in some capacity or look to make approximately two point one million dollars in, in cuts, I believe. And that was with a level funded budget at all, um, for purchase services and everything. Obviously contractual obligations, um, are such that it's as level funded as it can be. Austin, do you want to speak?
No, I mean, I think you did a pretty good job. I, obviously, it was, uh, um, just only a few members the other night that were able to discuss this. I, I think obviously we've been talking about the bottom line, that position, um, over the next few fiscal years for a while now. And I think we're getting to the point where we need some, um, discussion and decision from, uh, from this board with support of finance committee, and that's why we wanted to have that joint meeting the other night, uh, to give us some direction. I think, um, this year and future fiscal years, I think, put us in a challenging position to easily balance the budget, right? I mean, we don't have two million dollars in free cash to balance, right? We could use all of our reserves, but we're using all of our reserves for one year, right? So, um, there's some policy decisions, I think, that need to be made. And, um, we are meeting with, uh, with department heads on Monday morning, to summarize the discussion on Thursday and also the discussion tonight to give the board some direction. I presented, uh, um, and sent to the board and finance committee also kind of a timeline for depending on what the board decides. So, you know, whether it's an override budget, um, presenting and there's a timeline there leading up to town meeting and the town election. Or if it's a, if it's a cut budget, um, there's also a timeline there that leads up to the same town meeting and town election. So just looking for some thoughts, direction, guidance. This is the most up-to-date model, um, that we have based off of some assumptions. The only thing that is not an assumption is, uh, the town operating budget. This, as I mentioned the other night, includes the F Y, um, twenty-six budget requests from town departments. And W R S D and Bay Path are just assumptions. W R S D is, um, the figure, so, uh, in, on December, mid-December, uh, I, along with, uh, select board and finance committee chair, attended a meeting with, um, what is it, school district and, and the town's select board chairs and finance committee chairs. They presented a level services budget with assumptions. It, it equates to approximately a five point five percent increase to their operating budget. It, it equates to approximately a five point five percent increase to their operating budget. Um, and I looked at some historical data, um, and came up with the seventeen point seven eight million, which is essentially, it's a, we have been, on average, we have been twelve point eight eight percent of the total pie. I made a little bit higher assumption that we are fourteen percent. And that's where I got to this eight percent increase for, uh, WRSD. And BayPath, uh, is based off of, uh, the enrollment that we received from, uh, BayPath is adding, um, I believe, an additional thirteen students, if I recall correctly. Um, and, uh, based off of, uh, averages, but also our cost per pupil gets us to, uh, just, I'm gonna round up and say about a twenty percent increase for the total assessment for BayPath. Would put us, uh, between the three and then obviously our revenue position. Um, as, uh, Leah just mentioned, approximately about a two point one million dollar projected deficit for this year. And then based off of assumptions over the future years for the town and school, you can see the bottom lines over the future years that grow up to FY thirty. Happy to answer any questions.
What's been the average inflation cost, you know?
For what?
For Wachusett, let's say.
Um, so the average cost, I have that, just one second.
Eight percent, ten percent?
Um, I can tell you the detail of the average per each of them. Let me just-
Not their increase, I'm talking about their inflation increase. There's a lot of other factors that come into it too.
Yeah, well, I mean, so in- inflation's a little bit tough, right? Because it depends on, on what you're con- what you are purchasing. If you're locked in, right, so transportation, they bid out, so they, they're locked in for a couple of years. I believe they also bid on their, um, heating oil. So they're locked in at rates there, which they haven't seen inflationary, uh, impacts, um, for some of those expenses. But, um, I think like us, we're all seeing increases, obviously, in, um, wages, obviously. Um, and you're seeing that reflected in some of the collective bargaining agreements. I think that they've been pretty good, but I think we're being responsive to that as well. But also, um, no different than the town. We're all purchasing tires, we're all purchasing supplies and services that are impacted. Uh, to give you an idea, just, and this is not the cleaner spreadsheet, but I'll give you.
Well, Austin is looking for this. I think some of the conversation at Thursday's meeting was also, this is a level funded budget. And I think Jen had asked to see what a level services or departmental kind of, um, true needs budget would look like if we are talking about an override, not just putting, um, a, a bandaid on it. Uh, the conversation was the override a couple of years ago was really restorative and it got us back to where we really needed to be as a town for funding, um, purposes and hours, um, for staffing purposes and hours. And while the school was included in it, the schools were included in it, they weren't, um, active, active participants to get feedback as far as what their projected, um, uses were going to, to be. And I believe some of the numbers used for that, those projections were off. Um, and using the total, um, budget increases rather than the member town projected increases, um.
So I can just speak on the town budget. I mean, you are essentially seeing a level ser- services budget, so there's no impact on, um, services. I, I, I do hear the finance committee members point that level funding means a cut in services. I think the override restored some of the department's line items to a point where they're able to accommodate increases in wages and have it impact their supplies and services. So, you know, I think what you'll see is maybe slight adjustments to the figure that we have here, but nothing substantial. Um, you know, I think that we're all feeling the impact. Uh, we have an updated number today on what we're gonna expect for health insurance and it's more than what we have in the budget, it's around twenty percent. Um, based off of current enrollment, we're having to add five members to health insurance. So at, you know, that's another almost hundred thousand dollars right there at a family plan of twenty-some thousand.
What's our percentage we pay on health?
Seventy-five percent. Um, and then, you know, obviously most of our insurance line items and then our, our collective bargaining agreements. And, um, I feel it's important to also make sure that if we have CBAs, we need to make sure that we're taking care of non-union staff as well. Um, so those, uh, wage increases are there as well. So I think on the level services budget, it's not gonna be far off from what this fig- this bottom line figure is.
I think that's good. It's, my, my consideration is more, I'm, I don't wanna do an override for two million and then be back in the same exact position asking for an extra two million next year, for, for next fiscal year. So my, I guess my, where I was going with the level services is, yeah, they probably have some wiggle room right now for this upcoming fiscal year, but what about next year and the year after that? So those things are gonna continue to go up. So what are we looking at as far as, what's the true need to keep and maintain services at the level they are now with the staffing that we have that's appropriate? Potentially, again, room for wherever we need to have room to account for growth. So that we can ask for, do some sort of explanation if we're gonna be asking for more money. This is, this is why, like, and, and to my point, and one of the big points I made at Thursday's meeting was, you're, you'll be able to talk about this stuff to your blue in the face and, and people, you know, your, your average resident will probably understand. They're, they're feeling it too, yes, the costs are going up. They might be okay with it, but they still can't necessarily afford it. Their salaries are not increasing at the same rate. So they understand, they would love to be able to do it, but they're not necessarily going to vote for it because they financially can't. It's a matter of, do I pay my mortgage? Do I put food on my table? Do I pay more in property taxes? Like what's?
There's no way we're getting an override.
Uh, I, I, I agree.
I don't see that happening.
We might, Tom, if it's cheap enough. If they believe that we're gonna spend the money properly.
Which is why I was asking for the level services, because if we're gonna, I wanna know exactly what I'm asking for and why and be able to prepare for the next couple of years, so we're not-
What we, what we've never done in the past is break down the monies. We've never said, we need, um, what do we need? Twelve million dollars to run this town?
Town operations, about that.
We need twelve million to run this town. Wachusett needs eighteen million to run the school. Can't we break out those two and say, we wanna pass an override for the town? Now it's up to you for the school. Because if you try to, I am looking at annual growth rate fiscal seventeen to twenty-five of a hundred and twenty-three percent over eight years. Hundred, right, if I'm reading that correctly?
Yeah, so, yeah, so this is just, um, from FY twenty-five, the difference between FY twenty-five and FY, um, twenty-seventeen, um, those growth rates and then the compound annual growth rate, right? Incorporates the years, right, so that compounds it. So that's where you get pretty much the average increase, um, since FY seventeen. So the largest, obviously, where you've seen is discretionary, that's grown tremendously from FY seventeen and, um, transportation has grown, um, also double-digit. It makes sense our debt services going down because they haven't bonded anything.
I'm working at minimum local contribution. What the state requires us to pay averages three point nine percent a year. Right, cost rate is thirty-four percent for eight years. Discretionary has gone through the roof. And you're asking our citizens to absorb a hundred percent of that five million dollar increase for us? When that's discretionary? That's not even the minimum local contribution? How do we justify that to our citizens? Show me the numbers, show me the stuff that school is entitled to fif- five mil- I haven't seen the school committee come into us and say, here's why we're justified doing this. Did I miss something?
No, that was an argument that came up Thursday as well. I, I said, uh, why, why are the towns the only ones that have to cut services, cut staff? Uh, why can't the schools, why do the schools get to level service, everything? Why don't, why, why aren't we pushing back more on them? Yeah, does it, is it gonna take away something from the students? Yes, but then, you know, it's, there's gotta be a balance. Like, at what point do we tell the schools, you can't have everything that you want and leave us in the lurch and not be able to provide everything else for the residents? There's gotta be some give and take and I, I agree and I, I haven't seen-
I'm looking at those numbers and it's like, geez, don't they have any sense of justice?
Yes, to me, I think there needs to be a lot more discussion and pushback on the schools as to what.
I think we need to hold our school committee a little more accountable too. Even though they don't fall under our purview, but I think we still have the ability to discuss with them. Certainly when it comes to election time.
So as an elected board, how do you intend to do that and what direction do you have for me?
Well, see, that's what we gotta figure out.
Departments.
It's never been done before. Nobody's pushed the issue, so we gotta figure that out.
So I-
How, how do we get our town to hold the school committee for this town accountable? It's not up to us, it's up to the town. How do we get them to hold them accountable?
I think it's-
Yeah, I, I think, oh, sorry, Jen.
I was gonna say, I think it's something we need to figure out what to do. I don't think it's gonna help us for this fiscal year budget discussion.
She's in house, but-
I'll let, you wanna speak about the December meeting where it did come up, I think, some of the challenges? So I, I think to be fair to not just Rutland, but all of the communities, I think, expressed the challenges with what you're seeing in these figures. Um, I, I do think that you also, but you see the school administration for the largest regional school district, they have demonstrated, um, in a lot of their presentations, that they don't feel that they're providing, I think, sufficient resources for students. So there's, I think, a disagreement about the resources that are needed for the school district.
You know.
I think, but I, but I think that that's been in the superintendent's, uh, report about, for example, some of the MCAS data. So I think that, um, you know, I don't think any of us know, unless it, well, does anyone here married to a teacher or know a teacher? Know what it takes to run a school district? Um, I, but I think that, you know, maybe it's on us to educate ourselves for sure and have those discussions because I think all of us can say what we think the school needs. Um, but I, and, but I also recognize that we, we're not professional educators. I think you guys are rightfully advocating for the town and taxpayers.
I agree. But I would also, are you-
But unfortunately, state law says that we are responsible for education, paying for education. Um, and that unfortunately, especially with regional school districts, we do bear the brunt. Um, I mean, this, these increases have been, I think, historically devastating to town operations. So, um, I think there is an advocacy piece, uh, both at the state level, but to your point, I think also addressing the school committee members that, that there was a joint meeting held up a, a month or so ago with Rutland's representatives and I think they heard that, um, and went back to their s- um, to the s- school committee and I think Sherry spoke on that, I think, at that meeting.
Sherry had just mentioned, um, Sherry had mentioned just the, the want and desire for town, for Rutland, but I think it was voiced even at the December joint meeting, um, uh, earlier in the process budgets, projections from the school. Um, and I think there are a number of, of the surrounding, the Wachusett communities that are looking towards overrides, um, and trying, and that was some of the conversation in December was if we're gonna go for, not us specifically, but the communities were saying, if we're going for overrides, what does the school need so that you can be held accountable in this override also? Um, and again, it wasn't from a Rutland perspective, it was from the other community's perspective, but just kind of really involving the, the town, the, the school district as, as well as the towns and knowing that I think for all of us, the, the school budget is between, for all the surrounding communities, between fifty and sixty percent at least of the operating budget. Um, hold it inclusive this, um, more recently. I also would say our student enrollment proportional to the other, our student enrollment has generally increased and that has to be looked at not only in the number of students, um, that Rutland has added, but how that compares to the student population of the other five or the other four member towns. So the regional district agreement, um, funding formula through the state is an area for huge advocacy that the school committee, um, or the school administration is really kind of, this administration is advocating for, um, joint advocacy from the towns as well as the schools, um, to, for the state to look at the funding formulas for the larger regional school districts, um.
I mean, I hear, well, we need to take care of the kids, we need more money for the kids. And yet I'm looking at this budget by category. Nearly seventy-nine percent of the money that goes to educate our kids goes to s- salaries and benefits. Now that's everybody. That's maintenance, that's administration, that's every, eighty percent. Instruction and operations is ten percent. Well, how can we take an extra two percent from salaries and benefits and move it over to instruction and operations? Our fixed costs of taking care of the buildings and everything is a lousy eleven percent. How are, how are they not looking at this and saying, okay, all right, we want more, we want more, we want more? But you're outta, you're outta sync here with what should really be going towards the kids.
Yeah.
And I think ten percent is paltry.
What's the more going to? Is it going to those salaries and benefits or is it going to the instruction piece?
No, instruction is separate. These salaries and benefits are totally carved off from the instruction piece. That's special needs kids, that's in special instruction classes, nothing to do with salaries. So I, I look at this and I'm going, what is Wachusett doing? How do we rate our kids? How many go to college? How many, what do we, where do we stand in a class for the largest school, high school in the, in the state? Hot, uh, regional? Where do our kids stand? How good are we doing educating them? Because they keep asking for more money and more money. They need to tell us something of why they want this more money and it's not just 'cause of salaries and, they have to come up with a game plan. We are this, we do this, and oh, and I've heard like, well, part of our problem is too many kids are going away from Wachusett. They're going to say, John, well, the answer is why? What aren't you doing that's keeping your kids there? Or they're going to a BayPath and that's understandable. But they have not, in the years that I've seen, come to this town and said, here's our credentials. Here's what we're doing. Out of our teacher population, we have seven PhDs, we have seven of these, we have teachers taking this, we have been rated in our physics department as one of the top ten, nothing. They come here and they say, we want more money. I find that egregious.
I-
So, and I can't do anything about it now, you're right. I mean, they're proposing a budget, but when you look at those numbers, they're out of this world.
So I, I think it's a conversation we need to continue and, and push as far as, like you said, Leah, the, the formulas, the funding that the state provides, all of that. Um, but I mean, as far as what you need, Austin, I, like I said, my, it, nothing is gonna change. Expenses are gonna continue to go up and with our capacity to increase the levy, it's not gonna cover it. So we need to come up with some plan, just from a town operations standpoint. What do we need to be able to operate this town at the current level? Or the level that's appropriate, which we spent all that money to get it back up to what we feel is an appropriate level. So what do we need to do to maintain that and what does that mean as far as an override budget and?
And I think-
So with that model, sorry, Harry, uh, in that model, um, we did forecast out up to, up to twenty-thirty. So the, the figures that you see on the town operating side does include our regular increases, uh, uh, includes the wage increases for the collective bargaining agreements, include wage increases for non-union and incu- includes, um, approximately, depending on what the item is, um, you know, three percent increase for supplies and services. Based off of our aver- average for health insurance, it does include the assumptions for like health insurance pension, things like that. So the figures that you see in the outer years for the town, um, I think are responsive to the local services request that you're talking about.
Right.
Um, but again, we, we haven't developed those budgets in future years, so we can't speak for a couple of years from now. They're all, again, I think I said the other day, the most important words that are on that document are at the top left for planning purposes only, um.
And I just wanna reiterate that all of your documentation that shows the two point one million deficit now is not using any sort of one-time funding revenue. It does not include any free cash, it does not include any stabilization or anything. That was one thing I think this board had directed Austin, um, last year to do is to, to present us truly, if we're not able to use any sort of one-time revenue, what, where are we? Because we learned that the previous override had some one-time revenue pieces in there, um, and everything also. And so what, take all of that out and where are we? And then if we have, um, one-time revenue that we can put in and then that's awesome and fabulous and if it's better utilized to, um, capital projects or, or something, but then we have that option as well for the one-time revenue.
I need to drill down in two separate areas to help my brain.
Sure.
One is the town. One is the town. What's our budget for the town this year? Twelve million?
For FY twenty-five?
Yeah.
Just under twelve million.
Twelve million. How much will it take for the town to make sure the town has all the services it needs on that twelve million? Are we looking at an additional million dollars?
Can you repeat that question?
Twelve million.
Yeah.
We wanna level service everything. So how much would that increase on that twelve million?
Um, yeah, so the I think the green column and the outer columns, as I just mentioned, include the assumptions for. Um, increases to departmental budgets. So for FY twenty-five, again. Um, probably about half of that increase is is due to our fixed cost increases, um.
Is that broke?
You're seeing the twelve and a half million, sorry, on this right here where you see the cursor. And then these outer years are based off of the modeling that I have, um, on a separate spreadsheet, which shows each department by line item, certain assumptions that I've made for. Supplies, purchase services and wages, and I've I've plugged those figures in and out to FY thirty, um, so. So obviously, so I I I think these are assumptions, but my opinion is that, you know, for level services for town operations, we. By FY thirty get to, I'm gonna round up and say fourteen and a half, maybe fifteen million dollars.
So, right now, let's say at fifteen million, we're and total municipal operations twelve-five. And we're gonna jump to twelve-six. So our increaser really is about four hundred thousand dollars. So for the operating budget to maintain what we have for this town, we're really asking them for four hundred thousand.
Round up and say about a half a million a year.
The one point six extra is for Wachusett.
Just about, yeah.
Yes.
Four times.
Yep.
What we want for the town.
But it's also a bigger number, Harry, too, right? And, you know, the percentages are a lot bigger, so I.
But that's Wachusett's problem.
Yep, absolutely.
Not ours.
Yep.
So the town needs to know, we don't, if they don't pass the two and a half. We have to help them to understand what part of the two and a half or how much we really need for the town.
Yeah.
Cuz I don't think they're gonna pass a two and a half or three million override. I really don't. I don't care how hard you hit the town. I mean, there are so many people I've talked to that still go back, their memory of how the money was spent in six months. Just is in, it's burned into them. So.
It's.
I see that. If we ask for a half a million dollar override, we can take care of this town, not a problem.
Is that something that can be done to say we we would like the five hundred million for XYZ purposes, but not to fund?
Five hundred thousand, not five hundred million.
Uh, sorry, uh, it's it's late, sorry, um, yeah, but for the purpose of of maintaining our services, but we're not willing to pass anymore. To contribute to the school.
So it's interesting you mention that, um. We stumbled on, uh, what is called a stabilization fund override. Um, which some towns have passed. Paxton actually has one, they use it for capital, but. Basically, what you do is it's an override that goes into a stabilization fund and. Um, it's a special purpose stabilization fund that you at at its creation, you decide what it can be used for. And anytime you appropriate it, it can only be used for that purpose. So for example. One of the ideas that I had earlier today was our minimum local contribution number, right? If we pass an override just to 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 fund that or a portion of that, um. That can grow by two and a half percent every year, so it's almost sort of like a dedicated funding source for that specific purpose. So if it's. Minimum local contribu- contribution, health insurance, town operations. Um, that's something that's within the law and towns have utilized. I think one of the Brookfields, don't quote me on this, I think is using it for. Um, offsetting, I think there's special, maybe special education, one of those, um, it is an override. But it's, um, dedicated into a stabilization fund and needs two-thirds votes to come out. It needs to be appropriated. But again, it does grow by two and a half, um, every year. Now, the challenge that you have is, so for example, let's say. You do an override, the initial override of, uh, a hundred thousand dollars. Um, it grows by two and a half percent, so the next year you can do a hundred and two thousand, whatever. Um, if the following year you only do eighty thousand, it resets, so now you can only appropriate two and a half percent above eighty thousand. Um, so it's one of those, it's added to your tax levy, but it's a dedicated funding source for a dedicated purpose. That is something that that's a tool that's available for towns to utilize. Um, and again, Paxton does it for the capital right now, so.
How does that solve our school problem?
So, depending on how you wanna do it and depending how big, how big, um, you wanna do the override. It then frees up resources on the regular tax levy side for. Other expenses. So for example, if, and and my idea of the minimum local contribution is, I think that's been the lowest increase at on average. If you were to do a portion of that, which, uh, which has a dedicated funding source to grow over a year. Let's say, for example, it was a million dollars. You now then have a million dollars to be able to spend for town purposes or other purposes if necessary, or not spent. Um, so it's just a little bit of creative. Funding for some of your ongoing obligations that does have the ability to grow, but ultimately still has to be approved by town meeting and court of ballot as well, right? Um, so there's there's something like that, Jen, I don't know if that answered your question. But ultimately, right now, the way that we operate with no dedicated funding sources for stuff, we have one pot of money for thirty million dollars. And sixty percent of that grows tremendously high that the pot for the town just keeps shrinking.
Keep shrinking, exactly.
So.
And and that's what I commit, we gotta start thinking outside the box on this stuff.
Yeah.
We can't go for the next ten years relying on Wachusett just to tell us what they need. We have to have some kind of controls on this monster, okay? And because. They're a powerful organization and we can't keep living in their court. We're gonna lose every time on their field. So, how can we think outside the box that takes care of the town first? Because whose job is it to take care of the school? The school committee, which has nothing to do with us. Let them take care of the school and we'll come back and present it to the town, but we need to take care of the town. So this issue about we're gonna be passing a two or three million dollars, everybody thinks it's for the town, and it's not. So if we can get by with a half a million dollar override, I think that could be purch- I think that could be done, but not for the school.
So.
That's just my thought. So.
I think, Austin, eh, you, I think the board is still saying. Looking towards an override, not not the two million dollar cut, and we had talked, I think, at the FinCom meeting, kind of the dollar amount and. And the length of time and and the specifics of that were not yet there. Um, I believe you were gonna have some, you wanted to see how the meeting tonight went, I think, and then have some ongoing conversation with. Department heads and staff, um, and the finance team as well, um.
See, people are gonna, go ahead.
Question, I do have two questions, um. Finance team meeting today, I think we're prepared, um, to obviously work with town departments to get them ready for your meeting on the third. Um. Do you wanna see what potential reductions to departments look like on that night? Um. I have my thoughts on that, um. But we can, you know, we can talk about that. And two, do you also want, um, is it your intention to also essentially have two budgets at a. Potential town meeting or not add a potential at the town meeting on May tenth? Um, I also have thoughts on that, seeing how things are success, have been successful or haven't been successful here in some other communities. Um, but most importantly, I wanna have some direction for to the departments for the third. Um, about if we're giving you the override budget. Or if we're giving you the override budget and reductions in high level, what that would mean to their respective departments. Um, now remember, the February third meeting is just gonna be me presenting the. Essentially, the budget book in a high-level presentation. The in-depth discussion will be on the, you can't remember. Uh, it's the following week, the thirteenth, I think, with Finance Committee and Select Board, um, where that would be. Detail and what the cuts would mean and reductions. Um, I also just wanna be clear that the reductions aren't, um, there's some things that we we have to take off the table. Um, for cuts, so for example, we we can't cut our debt budget, so that's. I'm gonna round up and say three million dollars off the table, so that means that the pie gets smaller and that means the cuts get bigger. Um, are some of our contractual services, for example, we have, um. Like cable, we can't cut that because that's a dedicated funding source, but that's included in our our general fund operating budget. Um, some IT contracts that we have, um, but everything else is kind of under that pie. The the pie then comes to about. Seven and a half million dollars that has to be equitably reduced among the town departments. Um, so I just wanna know if you if you wanna see that on the third. And on the thirteenth, or if you just wanna see the override budget as well, or ju- just the override budget on those two nights.
I'd like to see the cuts, yeah. What does it mean? If we don't get the override, what does it mean?
Yeah.
So what you what you wanna see, Tom, though, is is, so for example, um, excuse, uh, I wanna be, uh. Too detailed. Um, you're not gonna see, for example, reductions and who, if it's staff reductions, who that means, right? You're gonna, you're probably gonna get an overarching high level of, I'm asked and I need to cut my budget seventy thousand dollars, and this is what we can't do with that.
Can't do with that?
Can't do.
Okay.
Um, just because. I think it's gonna be up to departments to put together expense and if necessary, staffing reduction plans that. Take so, in some cases bargaining, that won't be prepared for the third or the thirteenth.
Yeah, I agree with Tom. I'd like to see it all.
Right, yeah.
The what happens if it doesn't get passed and. Are we looking at presenting two override budgets, one for the town and one for the school? And if we're not, then we have to kind of be very specific and lay out of the override budget, this is the amount we're asking for the town. This is the amount we're asking for the school. Our people, the towns deserve to know what we're passing an override budget for. I don't want them to think it's strictly for the town that we're passing this much money for the town.
So are you saying two votes, essentially, two ballot votes?
If if that's what would it would take.
I'd have to see if we do that.
Now, I don't know what the impact of that would be. I don't know ramifications from the school or whatever. I don't even know if it's logical.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, we need to let the town know that we have two things we're dealing with.
Yeah.
One that's outside our control, one that's inside our control.
Let me check and see if we can do that, because, um, a town election vote increases the levy, so I. It might be confusing. We'd have to figure out how to do that because it's very explicit about the language that you that you have to put in, very similar to some other recent ballot questions that we've had. Um. It may also confuse people a little bit more if they if they show up to the town ballot, and because the language is so strict, they don't know exactly what they're voting on. If that makes sense, if you have two separate questions on the ballot. Um, one of the things to consider is instead of having everything split out, do you do an override budget? One number, thirty-some-one million dollars. Let's say it passes at town meeting, but fails at the ballot. You also, you don't have a town budget, but you also, I think, have failed the school budget. Um, so there's, I think we're.
And and my point, I would.
Those are decisions down the road, but there's things like that that we.
Right, I think the town, town has to.
The board needs to discuss, yeah.
And the town has to pass a budget, but it doesn't have to be two to three million. That's my point.
But just remember, Harry, it's one pie, right? We don't have the ability to split our revenues.
Well, I know that.
You know.
But we have the ability.
And that's the challenge, right, is you guys added two million dollars to the tax levy, but sixty percent of that, sixty percent of our budget goes to this, i- is someone else's.
That's the downside.
And that's the challenge.
Trying to let our people know what's going on.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you have uh enough guidance?
I guess so, yeah, so, um.
I know on, I think on Monday night, sorry.
Do, so again, I maybe just, do you wanna see that on the third, the reductions? You do?
I think if, it sounds, it sounds like if we can have it s- on the earlier side, again, high level, I think.
Doesn't. It doesn't have to be the third, I mean.
Yeah, well, that's why I wanna present the initial recommended budget, um, which I think is is based off of, I think, your discussion, the override. But I do understand and appreciate that, I think, and this was some of the feedback from Finance Committee, as well as they wanna see what that would look like. Essentially, you can look proportionally at the budget, the bigger ones have the bigger cuts, um, and what that means.
Um.
So we can maybe do that with more detail on the thirteenth.
Yeah, I was gonna say the joint.
But. I, do you wanna include that in the budget book? That adds a little bit more complex detail, which we can, we can do for sure, but. I just wanna have some clear guidance for the town departments on Monday.
Right. I mean, I think if if we have that large of a of a a number that we're trying to make up. And we're not sure that an override would pass period and how and wh- what that would look like, ha- I think having at least a high level. Um.
Yeah.
Information. And I think it does complicate it, but I think having it in the budget book isn't necessarily a bad thing either, just if it's.
For transparency, yeah.
If.
So each department budget, that kinda detail, or the we do the general fund sub summary?
I would, I would think, I personally would think the general fund kinda sub summary, like. M- more, it's gonna be this percent of obvi- like you said, the different departments, and again, the budget book right now is still a. A work in progress, but I know you're trying to finalize it, so.
Yeah, and and so, and the reason why I am really trying to hammer down on this is because I think the cut budget. I asked for a little bit more time for that. If if you guys tonight said, we're not doing an override, I could give direction and we were then delaying it, I think.
Till the thirteenth or something like after, yeah.
Yeah, um, a little bit later to have more time for departments to put together some of that detail.
Yeah.
Right.
I think for the third, we could definitely have maybe some high level, but. That's why I don't think I'd be able to put it in the budget book by the third, if that makes sense.
Right. Right. Yeah, yeah, and I think that that's fine if the board is amenable to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I agree. Yeah.
Um, I believe Wachusett is having their school committee budget roundtable. Um, with the administration on, I think, next Monday.
Yeah.
Um. And I would just encourage anyone watching our mo- our our movies, our meetings or anyone on the board. The school committee meetings are televised, um, on Holden Local Access Television, and they're also recorded, um, put it on and.
One ninety-four.
Yeah, yes, one ninety-four.
One ninety-four, I wrote one down.
Yeah, um, thank you, Paul. Um, to to put, they they have been talking a lot about the the student benchmarks and the.
Yes, yeah.
The enrollment and and the budget conversations and everything as well, so I just wanna be mindful that, um. It's more meetings to watch, but the information is there, um, for sure. So, um, thank you. Is there any future budget requests? I know there's been some conversation, um, from Historical Society.
Oh, agenda, you mean the gender request?
Sorry, what did I say?
Budget.
You missed the deadline, no more budget requests.
Yeah, sorry, guys. Future agenda requests. I know there's some conversation, the Historical Society would like some, um, consideration at some point. Um, so we will get that on, um, is there, does anyone else have any, um?
Uh, yeah, that was gonna be one of mine, that, um. Historical Society wanted to have that discussion about the lease agreement, and I know we just signed it, but just what's the process for extending it? How long does that, they wanna just have some information and start discussions so that that's in place. Um, and then the other one that I had was, um, I had a really good conversation with, um, Chief Knight and. Um, Deputy Chief Quinn last week about the concept of a fire district, um, as we're talking about all of these. Budgetary considerations, um, you know, what a fire district could do, how it could help potentially save. Money in certain aspects, um, it sounds like they are, um, just talking through the process, you know. As far as concept, it sounds like there's just a lot of information just to learn about what it means, what goes into a fire district, how to make it happen. Um, and they indicated that there's, um, grants available through either CMR, PC, or getting earmarks. Um, through Rhett Ferguson's office to basically outline a plan for what this would look like and what it could do for the town and the community. Um, so I just wanted to get the board. Um, so I just wanted to get the board's thoughts on discussing that, um. Seth and Ryan seemed amenable to coming in to answer questions or, you know, providing information. Um, but it sounds like really if we were to pursue it, the next step would be the blessing of the board. For them to pursue this grant to look into a plan, not, it's not any commitment that it would happen. But just to help with outlining what it would look like. So again, just from a cost-saving standpoint.
Don't regionalize fight about it.
Basically, something like that, um.
Yeah.
So just wanted to bring that to the table to see if we could put it on an agenda.
Yeah. Yeah. I I like the idea, but before I make a decision, even to go and go forward with it, I'd like a little more information on it.
Well, that's why I I'm asking to put it on an agenda to see if if they would come in, they they were agreeable to coming in and providing information, answering questions.
Right.
To to be able to hopefully take that next step, so that's.
We certainly don't wanna California.
I know.
That's for sure.
But just to.
We had our brush fires this summer, Harry, we're good.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we're still not taking care of our brush. The state has cut back on the amount of brush we're doing, so who knows?
Anybody, any other agenda requests?
I I have an agenda, I have an item here, I don't know if it's valid or not, cause we're dealing with LMEs. And I came across this document. And we have an agreement, apparently we have an agreement. With the Cultivation Post-Community Agreement. It was entered into on the twenty-first of September twenty twenty with the Mass Home Growers. A Massachusetts corporation with the principal office address of three Edson Ave in Rutland. Now, that's an LME, I would assume. So this is still, I I'm concerned how it fits into what we're doing as we're presenting to the town.
Yep.
Does it still exist, I guess is my question.
No, so I think all of the host community agreements have expired and. Based off of some of the changes that happened at the state level, um, you guys had voted to waive host community agreements. Because essentially, most of the, um, clauses that you saw in those host community agreements were unenforceable. Um, and actually shifted most, if not all, of the burden to the community to demonstrate why, for example. Um, we needed, and I'm not, I can't remember the explicit details, but let's say, for example, we had a clause that the, um. Uh, licensee had to donate five thousand dollars to a local charity. We had to demonstrate why it was important for Rutland that they donate that money. Just made, they shifted a lot of the burden from the licensees to, um, the communities. Um, so you guys voted to waive the host community agreement, so. Um, it, I think it's sort of created a precedent for how you treat some other applicants. So for example, if the if, um, the additional license does pass at the special town meeting. I don't think we'd be in the best position to then say to this new, um, individual, hey, you need to enter a host community agreement. Um, because most of it, we wouldn't be able to enforce anyways. And the only thing that we do have by right, because we accepted the law, is the three percent, um, sales tax.
Which the state has pretty much said is the only thing unless there's a super extenuating circumstances that is legally upheld. Um, just to re- follow up on that specific one, a previous board had voted to not, at at the time that. Um, a specific one had come before the board for renewal or for continuation and the board at the time had voted not to because there is no movement on it. To your point, O- Austin, since then, um.
Yeah, they're all gone.
MGL has changed or clarity has come through MGL, so.
So this is a paperweight, I can paper my.
You can shred that, yeah.
Good question, though, because that was, there's a, there were few, I think, that were, um.
Yeah.
And you know, it's a good thing that we didn't actually collect the money. I think Uxbridge, for example, was, um. Was sued and and was found against the town and they had to return almost a million dollars of those, um, host community agreement fees, if you will, so. Um. I I think it's something that until. The Cannabis Commission figures out how to properly enforce these, I think it's best we just stay away from anything above and beyond the sales tax.
Wow.
Good, good catch, Harry, thank you.
That was just weird, I'm going, I've never heard of these people before. You know where Edson at is? You know where three Edson at? It's a house, it's not even a business, and I'm going.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How did we ever get away with that?
Um, so our future meetings are February third and February eighteenth. We have special town meeting on February sixth. Um, and. That's here at seven o'clock, the special town meeting is here at seven o'clock. We will be posted for six thirty for any odds and ends, um, beforehand. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
We'll call Harry.
Second eye.
Third eye.
My dry.
Yeah, my.
White man eye, nine thirty-four.